Terrific, uh, let's call the meeting to order. It's a Select Boards meeting on September the 6th, 2018. I'd ask the town administrator to read the agenda with any proposed changes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we will amend or approve the agenda, and then public comment, and then consideration of consent agenda with a payroll warrant. The next meeting is set jointly with the library trustees for September 10th, and tentatively in a meeting set for September 20th. The next item is a tax rate classification hearing with Wendy Alasi, the chief assessor from the Board of Assessors. And the next item is consideration of signing bond anticipation note with Heidi Doyle, the town treasurer. Consideration review of revisions to the tree management manual with the Public Safety Committee and David Hawkins, Urban Forestry Solutions. Consideration review of draft general plan with Mary Nutra and John Higley from Planning Board. Conservation Commission request to utilize Conservation Commission funds for the purpose of retaining consultant for regulation revisions. Neil Kessler from Conservation Commission will be here. Then consideration review of proposed development at 41 North Main Street. This is a continuance of a previous item with Andrew Consigli, Gary Lebarski, and Pamela Brown, attorney for the development. And consideration of financial operational matters, financial update, routine business, town administrator report, selectmen reports. And we don't have a financial update tonight, anything more than what was emailed out, so we could remove that item. And then adjourn.
Terrific. Any amendments or revisions from the board? Have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Terrific. Do we have any public comment?
Should be using a sign up sheet.
Yeah.
Did anybody sign up?
I don't know. I think, I thought I saw Susie sign up.
Oh, look, Susan Tyler, public comment. Hello, all. Don't panic. Susan Tyler, Western Avenue. I don't know. For the people that don't frequent the town website, on the homepage this morning, I just happened to notice, uh, there was a new notice by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health has notified the Board of Health that a positive West Nile virus mosquito sample has been found in Sherburne. And that report came out yesterday and was reported to, on our town website this morning at 8:33 a.m. Central Mass mosquito control will be spraying in the Russett Hill area, weather permitting. Now, we just had all this rain, so whether it happens tonight, tomorrow night, um, but as a nurse myself and as the spouse of an infection control nurse, I suggest everybody just take precautions as far as mosquitoes and cover up, use your sprays and, or stay in the house. But again, West Niles and Sherburne. Thank you.
Terrific. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The next scheduled meetings are a joint meeting with the library trustees on September the 10th, and our next regularly scheduled meeting is on September the 20th. Anyone have any conflicts with those dates?
Chuck, you had mentioned at the last meeting about potentially setting up a regular, and I like this idea with this calendar where we know well in advance when our meetings are going to be.
Yeah, and Dave and Diana put together that in our packet with meetings out till February So I think we should all block them off. They are scheduled for basically every other Thursday at 7:00 p.m. Terrific. Any questions about the consent agenda? Anyone have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Second, all in favor? Terrific. Okay, the next hearing is the tax rate classification hearing. Wendy?
Good evening. Wendy Alasi, Director of Assessing. Mr. Yan, you should have an article, a legal notice from the newspaper, a copy that you read to open the tax classification hearing.
Terrific. And does that need to be-
I brought a copy in case you don't have it.
And does this need to be read into the, into the record?
You should read it into the record. It was in the Metro West Daily News for August 30th, I believe it ran.
I have one, I can just give you.
Yeah, I don't see it in the packet here. I have item two.
There you go.
Great, thank you. Terrific. This is the notice. Sherburne Select Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 6th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the Select Board's Meeting Room of Town Hall, 19 Washington Street, Sherburne, Mass. The central issue to be discussed during this class, tax classification hearing is whether all five classes of property, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal, shall be taxed at the same rate or at different rates for fiscal year 2019. Interested taxpayers are urged to attend the hearing. Written and oral statements from interested taxpayers will be accepted and taken into consideration at the hearing. Sherburne Board of Assessors.
Thank you. So, good evening. We are here tonight, and the purpose of this meeting is to choose a residential factor. Historically, the residential factor has been one, and that what that essentially means is not shifting the burden of taxes over to the commercial property owners. It doesn't really save the residents that much, and it would really hurt the commercial property owners. So the total assessed value for fiscal 2019 has increased at about $25 million for residential, and then there were small increases in the other classes as well. This year is an interim adjustment year, which means that we use our sales, market sales, and adjust as needed to the values of all classes. This year, our new growth, again, was historically high. Last year, it was 310,000. This year, it's 258,000. Next year, I project with all of the new developments going in to town that it will again be on the higher side. There was about 11.6 million in residential new growth, 1.7 in commercial, industrial, and personal property new growth. The total tax levy for 2019 is $24,052,971 with a debt exclusion of almost $1.8 million. The maximum permitted levy is $25,840, and our proposed levy is $24,981, which leaves us with an unused levy limit, excess levy capacity of $859,000. So that's a very positive, positive thing. As you know, the tax rate did increase by 32 cents this year. It went down a lot last year, and I don't think anyone was surprised by this increase. Most of it is due in part to the capital expenditures, and our budget increase for this year was $885,000, a 3.7% budget increase this year. And that's ultimately what caused the increase in the tax rate. So the average single-family home will see about a $300 a year increase in their taxes. So on page six, at the bottom of the page, I added some tax rate scenarios for you to look at with a 10% shift, a 25% shift, and a 50% shift in the factor over to commercial. As you can see, it really does not make that much of a difference. Right now, commercial, industrial, and personal property generate about $1.1 million. If we did a 10% shift, it would be $1.2 million, so about an additional $100,000. With a 25% shift, it would add about $283,000. And with a 50% shift, it would bring 1.6, about 1.7 million. So there's really not much of an increase. And on the next page, you can see I did individual scenarios for each shift. So a single, the average single-family property is $814,000 with the average tax bill at If we shifted the tax rate, there'd be a $74 savings for residents and a $1,595 increase for commercial taxes, for commercial property taxpayers. If we did a 25% shift over to commercial, it would be $188 savings to the residents, and it would actually increase the commercial property tax owner $4,000 a year. A 50% shift would save $367 for the resident, and it would increase the commercial taxpayer about $8,000. So these are my numbers, and if you have any questions, feel free. There's also the small commercial exemption, which we've discussed in the past. There's not enough commercial property in town to give them an exemption, and in addition to that, you have to decide if you want to do a residential exemption. And the residential exemption is really for towns and cities who have a lot of rental properties, second homes, and they're giving an exemption to people who are staying and living in town. And that really doesn't pertain to Sherburne.
Before we open it up, questions from the board. I had a quick question about the increase in the assessments. The primary increases were in the residential and the commercial. Was it approximately the same percentage increase for each?
Uh, no, I apologize. So it was about a 1.9% increase for residential and I think like less than a percent for commercial. And that was really, it's CIP, which is commercial, industrial, and personal property.
Or lumped together, okay.
Yeah.
Terrific.
I have a question.
Sure.
I see you have examples around the communities, and, you know, almost no one except for the largest community actually has a split tax rate. So basically, knowledge is there any community under 10,000 that actually bothers to do a split tax rate?
You know, that's a good question. I don't know. I've never done an analysis, but I can certainly take a look. It's easy enough for me to do that.
Seriously, that seems like a no-brainer.
But, right, yeah. Yeah, it doesn't make sense really for smaller communities.
So, can I say a few things?
Absolutely. Go.
First, I want to draw attention to the fact that the town of Sherburne does not tax to the full extent that we could. As I read your report, that we have an unused levy capacity. And for those of our audience and for the public, what is unused levy capacity? Doesn't that mean that we have the capability legally to impose more taxes than we in fact have imposed as a matter of law?
That's Sharon?
Yes, that's absolutely true, because we can-
So I want to commend the restraint that's been used by this board, by advisory, by all the town officials, that we have been frugal enough that we do not tax to the extent that we could under Proposition 2 and 1/2. I think we all should celebrate that a little bit and congratulate ourselves. Another point that I would make is that during the time that I've been on this board, we've always gone with a single tax rate. And the part that has been, the reason for it is that approximately 95% of the taxable base of the community is residential. The commercial is 4%.
4%, yeah.
It's really too small to matter. And so to make a change would be a fairly big deal, if you will, from what we've been doing for a long period of time. And in order to make such a change, there needs to be some kind of compelling case to do so. There's nothing in here that indicates any significant change-
Absolutely.
-that would lead to any need for anything different than what we've done in the past.
Yes.
So those are my, oh, I guess one final point is that property values for the average home are now the highest that they've been in a very long time, and that, to me, is also a very good sign. Because if I look back at your number for 2013, the average value of a house was $704,000.
Right.
And in 2019, it's $814,000. So things are going in the right direction?
They are. And I did a little analysis that I can just read quickly to you. In 2017, there were 63 sales in Sherburne. The higher-end homes, higher-end meaning, you know, typically about over 1.4, sat on the market for between 284 and 615 days. And a few of them had to drop their value by about $1 million. So what I'm seeing in this market is a lot of families moving in, buying, you know, colonials and smaller homes per se, and the higher-end homes are taking a little bit longer to sell, which isn't unheard of in other communities as well, but you can definitely see. So so far in 2018, we've already had 50 sales. So in an eight-month period, which, there's been 50 properties that have sold, and there's actually 56 currently on the market.
So we are doing better now than we have in a long time.
Yes.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
And just to add to that, in the Banker and Tradesman, I looked up the statistics for Sherburne. In the last, the first six months of 2017, the median sale price was like about $740,000, and it's up to $840,000 this year.
Yes, yes.
Up to $100,000, according to the Banker and Tradesman stats.
Yes, yeah. So we most, you know, depending on how the market goes for this year, there very well could be an overall increase. Again, there are particular homes and style homes that are selling higher, so maybe somebody who owns a Cape or an antique may not be seeing 840,000. But your typical colonial, things of that nature, you may see increases on those.
I have something to add here as well, just as a point that we are going up from 1930 to 1932. I just want to point out, as we spoke when we were doing budgeting this year, that last year, I feel like the tax rate was artificially lowered because with heavy use of free cash.
Yes.
That, so it went from over $20,000 a thousand down to 1930. So not to go, I was worried this year that we were going to be all the way back up to 20 again, so I'm happy to see that it's in between.
Yes.
And as Paul pointed out, not 860,000 of unused levy is great.
That is very, very good.
Yeah, it's almost 3% of the total potential levy.
Yeah.
Yeah, last year, there were a couple of windfalls.
Yeah.
So I think we've heard that we always approve the uniform tax rate. This is a public hearing. We've got lots on the agenda. Maybe we can hear from the public and then vote this?
Yep. Any interested taxpayers with comments on the single tax rate?
I would move we approve the uniform tax rate.
Second. All in favor?
Great.
Terrific.
Thank you. Chuck, you have that-
Yeah, the board needs to sign, it's an attestation that the Board of Assessors presented information and data relevant to making the single rate determination and fiscal effect of the available alternatives at the hearing, and that the percentages set forth above were duly adopted in public session, and this requires each of our signature.
May I borrow your chairman pen?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Terrific, okay. And the next item on the agenda is consideration of signing a bond anticipation note. Heidi?
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Did you announce to the Verizon customers that they're, they can hear the audio of this meeting, but they cannot see the video? It's a channel. They'll have to contact them tomorrow.
Terrific. Apparently, the live broadcast on Verizon has audio that's working and poor video. Hopefully, on the replay, it'll be fixed tomorrow. Great, thanks. Okay, Heidi.
Good evening. So I had submitted three fact sheets for you for tonight. I'm going to start with the first one to try and move that one off. This was for a revenue anticipation note that we were trying to see if we needed to do. At this point, I would like to put that on hold, and if we need to call a special meeting of the, we'll give you the 48-hour notice and proceed with that, but right now, I'd like to just move that one off.
Okay.
Revenue anticipation note. So the bond anticipation note, we had four bids, and they range from 2.28% to 2.7% on the 1.805364, which is apparently what the going rate is right now on the bands. So tonight, I have to present is several signatures that we will need. We have one document, and I had put some samples in on previous ones that if I could come up and just show you what, where I would need. I would need the clerk to attest on here. I need the, all the board members to sign on one, and it's basically going to be the green arrows where I need the selectmen to sign, then I will have the clerk here witnessing that the town clerk has seen, the assistant town clerk has seen you sign. So I guess if we could get in a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Who's the, who is the ban award to? Which banks?
The ban award is to Eastern Bank.
Eastern, okay. I'll second the motion. All in favor? Passes on a 5-0 vote.
It has to be blue.
You might not get this one back.
This is going, I guess we're going to start on here. So this is going to be the selectmen's, going to be all the team.
You prefer a blue pen?
As long as there's one, we want to consume.
Just pass the pen down. That's where we-
Do you need one?
Yeah.
Can it also be blue?
I do. This is a tricky one.
I have, look, looks like it's going to be blue. I can write it to you for a reasonable fee.
Never heard a word used term reasonable. We really trust you because we're not reading these.
Why is that blue?
Do any of these require clerk's signature?
They will. That will get politics after.
The clerk of the select board. I'm not talking counselor.
The clerk is going to be the clerk.
So this is for 1.8 million?
Yeah.
Just so that people know what we're signing.
Yeah, this is for the articles approved at the town meeting in spring.
And this language over here says that Chuck Yan is personally liable for-
That's it.
Absolutely.
Personally guaranteeing that.
Just teasing.
The next item on the agenda is a, we got one more, okay?
Did you want to interrupt in case you need to do a vote on it?
I've run out of things to say.
And the last item for the ban is a useful life statement so that we can eventually go to long-term borrowing, but they require that this be done at this time as well. And the useful life of the equipment, I have a sample that can be handed out.
It's done to George.
So what is, what is the useful life?
This is what I'm recommending for the useful life of the equipment, but I did not tell that George will fill in after you make the vote.
So the determination of the number of years here, 20 years for the two engines are based on information from the fire department?
And the DOR has certain regulations. We could go up to 30, but this board previously in the last one we did did not want to go over 20 years. We actually have one that was 10 years, and that was a little bit too, that's a big chunk to take. So I'm recommending 20 years on these fire trucks to be in line with it. The last, we were placing a 28-year-old fire truck and a 32-year-old fire truck, so we're well within the useful life.
Okay, so I move that we approve. Do I have to read this whole thing?
Second.
The street sweeper was 10 years of use before, so I'm recommending 10 years on the street sweeper.
The motion was to vote that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed on the attached, refinanced with the September 6th, 2018 ban award.
Second the motion. Real comfortable with the 20 years. I mean, the reality is, it really has been 25 to 30 years typically. It's been, for fire equipment, it's been the, what we've gotten out of them, but in the past, it's always been 20 years, the ones that I've seen. I'm comfortable with the 20 years, but-
Right. I'm happy to go to 25, but I just, I'm going by your history of what you've done.
Not just the useful life, but it's also the value of that equipment as the loan is paid off, and I think where the fire truck is fine with that.
Right.
And a sweeper probably is not more than 10 years.
Terrific. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Passes on a 5-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is a, our first consideration and review of revisions to the tree management manual. David, you want to set this up for us?
Hopefully, Michael Goldstein's here. Oh, there he is, okay. Michael Goldstein is the chair of the Public Safety Committee, who's been reviewing this manual over probably a year. You should probably come up. And the consultant that is here is David Hawkins from Urban Forestry Solutions. He's been working with the Public Safety Committee in doing these recommended or proposed changes- changes. And I believe this was paid for through a MIA grant? Is that what we, I think it was a grant through MIA that our insurance carrier that paid for the consultant on this. So, Michael, maybe you can just walk us through what your process has been in reviewing it. The board has had this just a few days to look at and it's, on its most recent iteration post-town council review. But maybe you can update the public on what you've been working on.
Well, I want to give as clear and fair a description as possible. So I've been on the Public Safety Committee, I'm going to guess, a year or more now. Feel like we discuss trees at every single meeting, the specific language, but we were not necessarily, we were discussing trees in general, not always the manual. At our last meeting, the consultant who worked on the revisions presented the revisions and we had, I'd say, a robust and active discussion about the revisions to the tree manual. Although, that was probably the first meeting where we were presented with it as of all the revisions. I think other members, at different members had a time to, were able to look at it. But it was the first meeting, public meeting, and there was a number of discussions. Cognizant of the fact that this process has been going on for a very long time and that it was going to come to you all, in the end, the voting members of the Public Safety Committee voted unanimously, five, I think 5-0, to say that we support the changes as proposed from a position of public safety. And then we also recommended that it go through, that we also recommend to you all that you put it through town council because there's a variety of questions. So we've had, I may be misremembering, but my recollection is we had one meeting where we had the document in front of us, which we actively discussed. But the process of talking about the trees seems to have been a continuous process that predates my joining.
Has, Michael, has the planning board or the traffic safety committee or conservation committee, any of the town committees reviewed this or been involved in the drafting and review of this?
So I'll turn, I have to turn that over to the, the process by which the consultant used to put it together. I'm not, let me say it a different way. We didn't have a joint meeting with the planning board or the traffic safety committee, as far as I know. We have representatives, the traffic safety committee, on the, on the public safety committee, but they didn't come and make a presentation to us, to the best of my recollection.
I think the intent was to bring a proposed recommended document to the selectmen and the selectmen to kick it out for a comment to everybody.
Mr. Hawkins, walk us through what the process has been and what the recommended changes are.
Okay. Yep. Hi, I'm Dave Hawkins, consulting arborist, Urban Forestry Solutions from Pelham, Mass, not New Hampshire. So, yeah, basically, last January, I was hired under that grant from MIA to review and amend and add to where necessary items in the management plan that was written in 2004. And this whole thing is meant to complement what you already have and update it. And we also added some items that weren't in the old one that seemed to need to be put somewhere in this manual. And in essence, we did a lot of work on private trees and safety, public safety, what to do, what are your options? We talked about that last meeting. Risk trees in town. And that's something that I was originally brought on in 2016, where I did a complete tree risk assessment for the town of Sherburne. And so, you know, there are certain standards that we follow and procedures for that. So that's all in the manual. We looked at planting. We, there's a lot of information in the 2000 manual. We kind of augmented that with some updated standards and practices that you could follow in that. We added the latest, some of the ANZI specifications for the industry in both tree risk and planting and pruning. And there's also added tree protection specifications in there and maintenance. So basically, we took what you had and just kind of beefed it up a little bit, updated it, and made it more relevant for today. And I guess I was asked to come here just to do a question and answer, if you have any questions on it. I'm more than happy.
I had one question. It's not directly on this, but you've got this tree survey, which I think I've seen before and it's dated January 20, 2017. And Sean might know the answer to this, but other than the ones that have fallen down of their own accord, has the town taken any steps to address these hazard trees? And how many of them are down? And how many of them are still up?
I couldn't possibly count the ones and the changes every day. I'm probably free off it from today. But I can say that about 40 letters went to homeowners after that assessment. So if I let it send out at the time to homeowners requesting that they remove private property trees. There was no follow-up that I can find to quantify how many of those were actually taken down. I know a few because I had people reaching out to me, trying to find tree guys that get some at the time, or asking questions about whether they had to. I can say it's become more fraught because we tend to have an awful lot of calls at night for trees that are laying on the road that weren't a town tree until they hit the road.
So are these, the.
While I get the mic real quick, I just want to recommend two guests we had here to add some color to the conversation. Chris Gonzalez and Paul.
Sellers.
I mean, last name, from EverSource. They were, they came yesterday to meet with us to talk about vegetation management. So it seemed appropriate to ask them to come to this.
So Sean, are these private trees, though? Or are these public trees in this assessment?
The whole list?
Yeah, this assessment.
No, that's a combination poll.
It's a combination, okay.
Again, that was an assessment of the trees prior to the last three years of devastation from 15 blocks. So it's kind of a useless list right now. I'll go back and look at how stuff was.
Well, the only thing I think it is, so we've spent $8,500 on a, on a tree manual and we've got a lot of people who are interested in the details of this. But when you boil it all down, if you're not taking down the trees that have already been identified as the most hazardous trees in town, we're spending a lot of effort on words. You know, if, if these are trees that can go through a process and come down, I don't know why we don't start by fixing that and deal with, I mean, I'm not on board with this draft necessarily, but I, but I do think we've got to address the actual problem, which is dangerous trees. And, and I'm seeing we've got a list from 2017. And if we haven't done anything with it, you know, shame on all of us for not doing anything with this.
So.
We have a list from 2018. I assure you, it dwarfs out, and so does the gentleman from EverSource. That's why I'm saying that list is pretty much null and void. Every tree that was on it that's still standing, I can assure you is on it again. It may have been in decline, it's not dead.
All right, but if we've got 20 high-risk trees here, I, yeah.
We have 500 high-risk trees right now. Someone else has compared.
How many trees were, the planning board had several hearings last year. How many trees were on that initial list? I don't, John, do you? Or Mary, do you?
About 220.
But it was, after the hearing, it was pared down to about 100 or 100.
170.
Maybe, something like that.
Pruned back to 100.
Keep in mind, that was not a town list. That was an EverSource list. The town did not do a tree removal list last year.
So if I could, I want to make two points. I was on the board that appointed a tree committee. I had the honor of appointing some really good people, including Mike Giama, who was the chair of the committee. They came up with a thing called a policy. But what you are presenting to us is a regulation. And for us who are lawyers, words are important. A policy is essentially advice. A regulation has the force and effect of law. And that being the case, there's a whole different procedure for adopting it. This is not a question of just a vote of the board or selectmen. I would suggest that, or recommend that, there has to be a formal public hearing before we get to the point of adopting anything. So the first thing I would say is that given that sort of sea change in the document that's in front of us, from a guidance document to a regulation, we have to treat it differently here at the board level. And it's not properly before us for any action at all because a public hearing has not been scheduled for this thing. But the other point I would make is that I got this document, I believe, Tuesday, or Wednesday morning. And although I've skimmed it, I have not had the opportunity to review it with the kind of care and attention that I think it deserves. Particularly where it's been an issue that has provoked a lot of public concern, at least during the time that I've been on the sport. It deserves a very careful read by me and by others. So I do want to invoke what's called a point of personal privilege under parliamentary procedures and say that, that I'm not prepared to take any action on this thing because I haven't had sufficient time to study this thing and give it the weight that it deserves. So what would really help me, since I haven't had a chance to study this, is to someone such as yourself, walk us through the document, almost page by page, almost line by line, and explain what it is that, that we're doing? Why is it different from what was before? And somewhere along the way, explain to me why it has to be a regulation? Why do we feel a need to upgrade an advisory document to a formal regulation?
Yeah, well, I don't think that was my intent to make a regulation. I'm giving advice and amending what you already had. I think some of the terminology in the last meeting, we discussed it, might need to be changed in that. But my, my job is basically to bring this thing up to speed, bring it up to date, and address certain concerns that were brought up in the public safety meeting. You know, specifically, private trees. What do you do? Some planting issues, have replacement issues. So basically, I just built on what you had and used my resources to kind of add to it. As far as the regulation part of it, I wasn't asked to do a regulation. I was just asked to do a management manual.
Well, there is language, like the 2004 policy, the initial paragraph describes this as tree management policies, but then at the very end of the introductory section, it describes it as a regulation being promulgated pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 87, Section 2, Shade Tree Act. So it is described as a, as a regulation.
That is a regulation. That is a law when it comes to public shade trees. And that's just part of this. It's included in here as a reference. But you have to abide by Chapter 87 with public shade trees. So at that point, yeah, it is a regulation. But the rest of it is, is pretty much is informational and recommendations.
I think that, that's kind of the gray zone in here. Right. Actually, that's not a regulation. Mass. General Law is, is a statute. Statutes enable regulations. You can write regulations under enabling of a statute. And then you can have, as, as Paul said, something softer of policies. It is right, twice in the first paragraph, it says policies, and then it says regulations citing that. And I think that basically goes our vetting. I agree that, that this should be looked at, you know, a bit more detail. We can actually have a hearing and kind of make this more official per se. I don't think there's any intent to really make this a regulation. Like, you know, I'm used to regulations, which, and they look and feel different than this, that this would maintain a policy like it was in '04. I guess what we ask for you, I think, you know, Paul was saying, go line by line, is maybe it's possible for you just to simply, if you were involved in the drafting of this, simply highlight what changes there are compared to the '04. What, what got updated? You know, in general, like the way we approach certain things or whatever? Is there any way, just to kind of hit the high notes there?
Yeah, we can, I can try.
Okay.
It's a big bill. One thing we did, let's see, we used the, on Section 1 here, in the old draft, the goals, kind of updated that and there's some more wording on tree preservation in there. We added a lot to the definitions because there is some terminology in both tree risk and tree preservation that is referred to in the report that normal layman probably wouldn't understand. So we put that in the definitions. And most of what you had in the old manual are in there, too. We did change some wording on, oh, I don't, what was it? Endangering tree. There was some talk about changing hazardous trees are not the greatest term for it. High risk is what we use, or risk tree is what we use in the industry. So we kind of tried to work that in a little bit. Threatening tree is another option. All right, and let's see. On Section 2 in the old manual, we actually moved that to Section 9 in the newer draft. Tree replacement, we updated that. I put some graphics in about correct planting procedures, references for that. Just some guidelines on, on where to plant. All right, so let's see. Section 3 on maintenance, we referred to that in Section 8 and Section 5 in the new draft. Again, just updating things, mentioning some of the industry specifications, the ANZI standards for pruning. And I think we also recommended that it be done by professionals. I think the old manual had, had an instruction on how to prune as if people are going to go out and do that. And I, I'm not sure that's a good idea with large street trees. You want professionals and arborists to do that. Section 5 in the old one, on the removals, that kind of gets divided up into six and seven under the new manual. And that again refers to some of the hearing processes under Chapter 87. High-risk trees or threatening trees, we mentioned that in Chapter 6. And again, we carried over some from the old manual and just kind of reorganized it. So it's tough to go through this whole process in 10 minutes here, but.
But to highlight the changes.
Yeah, to highlight the change. I think the main changes we looked at were, were private trees, risk trees and private property. That's a hard one to deal with because you're dealing with private property.
That comes to my only substantive question about the whole thing is 6.2 actually like allows access onto, you know, without a private property owner's permission onto private property. Has that been used on the communities or has that been vetted by any kind of council?
That is, I have this from a publication called Arbor Culture and the Law. And it has some information. For instance, it's a duty of a board of a township trustee to keep the township roads in good repair. Remove an obstructing tree even if property owners along the road up to the center of the road. All right, so they're saying that private trees can be addressed by the town. Where a tree located on private property along a township road is dangerous branches hung over the road, removal is a duty primarily of the owner. But the township trustees are obligated to remove said tree by such proceedings as a nuisance abatement. So there is stuff out there on this.
It was kind of the first sentence, which actually says that if a property owner does not move it within 60 calendar days, that basically the town can go in and remove that tree. But that one is just, does not actually directly even say right of way. It talks about threat to public safety or adjacent property. So you could almost get involved with like border wars between people's properties. You know what I mean?
Well, yeah, yeah. It happens all the time, too.
Can I just build on what Eric is saying? There's something called the Fourth Amendment to the United States Constitution. It requires a government to get a warrant before it enters upon private property. I don't see anything in here about getting a warrant.
No, that's well beyond my scope on this.
And I see.
Discussions with the safety committee and.
I see there was referred to town council, but town council entirely missed the issue of the Fourth Amendment. I'm really concerned about government intrusion on private property rights. As a property owner myself, and I think most people in this room are private, private property owners, they don't want to see the government coming upon their properties at will and deciding, well, we don't like a tree, we're going to cut it down. This, there isn't any provision for getting any kind of warrant, any kind of court supervision. This, there isn't any provision for getting any kind of warrant, any kind of court supervision of this before entry upon the property, and it leads to a whole set of liabilities far beyond what Town Council's analysis involves, because there's punitive damages, there's legal fees for the entry upon the property. I'm not, this, there's this discussion about, gee, if they, if they actually take down the tree, they're obligated to compensate. And so Town Council is saying, well, if you compensate somebody for the removal of somebody's property, you got to compensate. But the issue of government intrusion upon the private rights of citizens isn't, isn't addressed here at all, and I'm, I'm really troubled by that, and that's one of the issues that I wanted to give a lot more thought to before I would sign on to something that seems to authorize...
So Chuck, I got a question and a suggestion. My question is, and, and I'm, I'm impressed with your credentials and your experience in this, um, and I, you know, I would stipulate in this room, you're probably the guy who knows the most about trees and, and tree management and tree policies, just based on the experience you've had. Is this kind of tree manual something you have an effect in Pelham as the tree warden, or you've used other places?
No.
No?
No. I don't have much in Pelham as far as tree. We have a lot of trees, very few people. You know, the biggest problem I have in Pelham when we cut trees down is who gets the wood?
Ah, okay.
So, it's really not an issue. We don't even have a town common or anything. It's woods and houses. In, in Boston, we just, when I was in charge...
Different situation.
Different situation. That was interesting. We didn't have a policy per se for trees. It was basically fallen back on Chapter eighty-seven. Other towns have policies such as this, tree preservation policies. Other towns have, um, policies for private trees, and usually what it comes down to is if there's a dangerous tree on a private property, of course, the owner's notified, but in many cases, it's an absentee landlord or dilapidated property, and nobody's going to take that tree down unless it falls into the street, and that's a risk that they don't want to take. So, I mean, I don't know the legal part, you're, you're better versed in that than me, but this is how it's done in some communities, where they'll actually put a lien on a property to, to take the tree down if they have to, to keep it safe.
Thank you. And I want to piggyback on Paul, because those were all comments I had, too, and you said them very eloquently, but I, I agree with Paul, this is not a public hearing, and we need to have a public hearing before we adopt this. And before we had a public hearing, I would like to hear what some of the other boards in town think about this, and would appreciate comments from planning and conservation and any other committee that, you know, may be interested. And so I, I would suggest we, you know, postpone this until those boards have had a chance to look at it and, and discuss it. And in saying that, I don't think we should slow down for a second the ongoing processes of removing hazard trees. I think that needs to continue. I know, uh, our, our utility companies have done a lot of work to identify the worst trees, and we should be focusing on the worst ones and, and picking those off, and, at the same time, trying to come up with a, a workable policy. But I, you know, I, for all the hard work you put into this, and there's a lot of great stuff in here and a lot of new information, um, you know, I agree with Paul, in the details, it still has some, some kinks and, and some things that need to be worked out, and there's obviously a lot of people who are concerned even on the policy side, so there's going to be some, some balancing there probably, too.
Yeah, and public safety, you may want it to take into account the consideration of drafting this as a policy manual, not as regulations.
Yeah, which is a pretty, it's an easy enough fix, but...
Which is an easy fix, but it, it really matters in terms of, of tone, but the, I agree with you completely, Mike. The real risk are the number of trees that are falling. I mean, we've had an accident on Maple Street that, assuming your mom's car was totaled, and, um, uh, the list of dead and, and dying trees is, is really growing, so that, that's the problem we need to focus on.
I mean, if you, if you look at the two, two of the recommendations here, the tree committee urges the selectmen to make adequate funding for tree care and replacement, part of the annual budget for the town of Sherburne, and recommends that the selectmen appoint a standing committee to advise the town on matters pertaining to policy and care and maintenance of town streets. I don't think the Board of Selectmen in 2004 followed up on either of those. I think those are still good suggestions. We, we have not funded tree removal nearly enough to...
That was your recommendation of the chair of this committee?
Well, this was a committee's recommendation.
It was, it was added into the CM and D budget, but it's been, it's entirely inadequate for what...
Chuck?
Since Sean pointed out that we have some gentlemen from Eversource here, uh, I'd like to hear more about what your discussion was with them, Sean, and, and kind of where they're at in tree removal on, on trees that you see as hazards to your, to your property.
Can I interrupt right after I circle back, kind of on the other side of a couple of corners? Uh, one, I want to thank Dave Hawkins. This is the last public hearing we already have paid for so far with the grant, so by no means did anyone think you guys were going to act on this draft.
I think some people in the room did.
But, well, that wasn't the intent of this.
I got a lot of letters.
Public Safety Committee probably isn't the best to draft some of these meetings. I think that the select board needs to be thinking about how we should handle this, because like you pointed out before we started, there was a list in 2016, public notification went out, that was the end of it. That, that's it. That's all the tree warden has the authority to do. The people in this room, they have threatening trees on their property, so the town should probably figure out what to do with those, with those trees. We hope that Eversource will take them, because they go both sides of the boundary and ask for permission to take them, but if the town's foot in the note, we got to probably figure out what to do with them, because it costs a lot of money to pick it up off the road in the middle of the night, and it's pretty risky, and that happens more than once a week now. So, these are real problems we probably should figure out. You're not going to just end up going outside of our policy for the rest of this year. That's the reality we're in. I think we need to be drafting it as a group, not just the public safety.
Could I respond to one thing that Sean said, or that Mike said? In the period of time from 2004, when I think the man, original manual was done, until now, we did seek funding in different ways, and I believe at one point, there was a warrant article specifically adopted by the town that had money in there for removal of trees. And there was a, a burst of activity ten years ago or more to remove a lot of trees. I also want to give great thanks to Eversource for their partnership with the town in removing trees. I understand there, there are hazards to your power grid and your structures, and it's a lot easier to remove a tree in good weather and good conditions, as opposed to trying to fix a situation where there's a blizzard and there's terrible weather conditions, and you have to deal with crews that you brought in from California to try and restore power. So it makes a lot of sense to continue that partnership with Eversource, and, uh, we don't want to have power outages here, and we don't want to have dead trees, overhanging wires that we know are going to fall in, in a storm. So, uh, thank you for what you've done so far, and, and please help us going forward with addressing this problem.
Particularly those of us that have private water supplies, don't want the power to go out, and that would be everybody in this room.
So let me set the stage on what's going on this year so far. I've spoken with Chris Gonzalez probably every week since March, pleading with them to come help us in, in the tree removal. Last year, that process started in mid-summer, and took till late October to get Eversource approval of removing trees. They didn't even start before the bad windstorm took down the first ten percent of the trees. It took throughout the entire winter for them to get the public and private property trees down. Stanley Tree is, they're through, so the bright red trunks that were here for six months, that was, that... Very recently, Eversource came to us to set up a meeting, and we're kind of comparing notes between the two of us. The, the tree warden and myself went through, and we came up with five hundred dead trees. That was before the gypsy monster hit this year. So we identified the dead tree. If it didn't come to life this year, it's not going to be bad. That was five hundred plus this spring, and it didn't overlap with the Eversource foresters that were around around on Hollis, Mason Hill area. They have their own list. We're going to combine those lists. By the end of it, it might be seven hundred trees. Doesn't really matter, because we're not going to take seven hundred trees every year we can. I'll hand it to them, but they've asked, and they intend to start probably around January first, doing their removals. We currently don't have the budget to do probably hardly any removals compared to what it's costing us just to do the emergency day-to-day. Take down trees that have fallen and, and danger, that'll suck up.
They would need about, probably a hundred thousand to make a dent in, in this, and probably two-hundred-and-fifty to take care of the...
Yeah, I mean, Chris can speak to that. They see, there's more than a million of them, I think.
So are we insured if a tree falls on a car?
Our car?
Does insurance cover that?
Our car.
The residents' car?
If a town tree, yeah, we're, it'll go, it'll go in the town's insurance.
So why not...
If, if we were at fault, but not, they would have to, I believe, like a pothole would have had to have been reported as being hazardous.
Presumably the insurance is...
Well, Sean just reported seven hundred hazardous trees, so I think that reporting part of it has been taken care of.
We don't know which trees those are.
Sean does.
They have a windstorm!
Yeah. If it's one of those trees, yeah, then it would be hard to say that we didn't know about it.
Presumably insurance would only kick in, though, if we're at least trying to do the right thing. You know what I mean? If we say, okay, we're not going to do any trees, we're not going to spend a dime for the next ten years, and it starts falling, I think their insurance company say that we're not doing our due diligence.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that we put a, a placeholder on the warrant for the upcoming annual town meeting to appropriate money to remove trees. I'm not saying how much at this point. I'm not saying what the source of funds would be, but I'm saying it's pretty clear from reading the tree manual again, and from what Sean has just said, that we need to remove trees. We got to protect the public safety, and to do that, we're going to need money, even with the help of Eversource on the trees that are going to affect your, your power system. There are trees that are not.
I, I share George's interest in hearing from the folks from Eversource on where, where we are and what work is left to be done.
Sure. So, again, by way of introduction, Paul Sellers, an arborist with Eversource, Chris Gonzalez, the actual arborist for this area. We've been in discussion with the town for the last couple of, well, for several months, but the last couple of weeks, we reached out and, and thought of the advantages of a meeting, talk about the current situation that's, uh, really got the town in the situation with the dead trees. Obviously, through the March storms, we incurred a tremendous amount of damage, and it's really starting to escalate, and we'd like to try and get a hold of the situation before it gets any further away from us. So, we, we've identified a tremendous amount of dead trees. We had the hearing last year, and we got a number of trees approved, we had a number of trees that were denied. We are in a situation now where we need to start planning for next year, the first of the year. Currently, all of our resources for crews and funds are pretty tied up on planned work that we already have scheduled, but we're trying to get out ahead of this, especially in Sherburne, and so we hit the ground running the first of the year. So, we've been given the list of nearly five hundred trees that have been identified in Sherburne. We did some calculations, well, we did kind of a windshield survey, Chris and I, and we estimated we had about five hundred thousand dollars worth of work that we saw that we'd, we'd have to infer, based on the list that we just did some review of today, using our pricing, which is generally fairly favorable with the unit pricing that we get for removals. The list we reviewed from the town is about five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So, we, at this point, we're going to go through, combine these lists, qualify which trees we feel we need to remove, the reliability of the system in shape, and come back, circle back to the town with kind of a finalized list that we need approval for to be able to move the first of the year. So we'll be able to come back to you with kind of a game plan of who the contractors are, the resources that we're going to bring in, kind of a timeline schedule of when that start, completion date will take place. We talked about some of the resources that we will need from the town, wood disposal, chip disposal, one of the items we need to overcome. Police details are a huge item, getting enough of them. Sometimes, we've got the construction issues that are going on in town, or even some of our own crews, competition for police details can be a big issue for us, and sometimes that will impede getting the work done. So, we'd like to visit the possibility of using certified flaggers in some areas where it's appropriate to try and get past that. But that's where we're at now. Chris, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add, or...
No, not specific. I mean, Paul, pretty much said that he was going to do.
Yeah. It's a lot of firewood out there.
We've already put a, Sharon maintains a list of reserve fund transfer requests, so we've put like a tentative request on there. You may see something like that coming in the future or an interfund borrow.
Can, can I move to refer this to other boards, Chuck? Is that an appropriate disposition this time?
Yeah, I certainly, as I indicated earlier, I certainly want the input of traffic safety and planning board and conservation. I don't, this, I'm not sure it requires a formal motion.
Let me ask, can I ask one question? Will somehow deferring this approval affect the removal list at all? Or, I guess, questions to Sean?
Well, a list? That's not going to affect a list.
Okay.
The list is the list.
Just making sure that, that that process is moving forward.
It's going to affect the ability of the tree warden and my department to be able to keep the public safe via a tree that's going to fall on the road that we can identify that we know is sitting on town property, I mean, on private property.
That's a good idea.
And there's a lot of them.
So, so then I would move that we refer this app for, for the comment by interested boards, including, we want to hear from traffic safety in reaction to the comments tonight and planning and conservation, if they have comments they can provide.
Yeah, I would second that motion. Any discussion regarding the motion?
Just one point to respond to Sean. If you see and know a tree that's about to fall, it's going to injure somebody, remove it, and we'll support a reserve fund transfer. It's exempt from all this procedure? A tree that's an imminent threat to human life or property, you don't need to follow any of the procedures in any of these manuals? The statute gives you a clear pathway to remove the tree, remove the tree.
If it's on public...
If it's on public property.
If it's on, of course, yes.
I was just, I was thinking of an amendment that you'd mentioned earlier.
All right. Chuck, I would like to amend Mike's, uh, motion with like a deadline, September thirtieth, October fifteenth, and hear back from other boards and committees. If that's okay with Mike.
In terms of the timing, I, I'm not sure, based on the comments we've heard, public safety may be having some revisions to it. I, that, that may be a little aggressive, uh, into the year. I, I'm completely on board with Mike, which is I'm more, much more concerned about taking care of the dead trees that are at risk than finalizing the manual. I'd like the, the policy in the manual to be well-considered, so what about into the year as a deadline?
Sure.
Nope, I, I...
Be a little more aggressive than that.
I think we get into town meeting by that point. Why don't, why don't we say the end of November? That's...
That, that sounds reasonable to me.
Yep.
So you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Sure. I'll second that.
Great. Any other discussion up here?
All in favor?
All in favor? Okay, five zip.
Do you want comments back by the end of November?
Yep.
Yeah, we want to take it up again at the first December meeting, I guess.
Okay.
That would be my thought.
Right. Suzy?
Yeah, hi there. Um, three quick things here. I heard, first off, I don't know how many people were in town when we had all the winds and the rain and the this and that. I don't drive on these roads when there's the...
I heard, first off, I don't know how many people were in town when we had all the winds and the rain and the this and that. I don't drive on these roads when there's the wind and the rain, because you never know whether the branch or a tree is going to come down. Secondly, I heard mention that we'll take this up at our next annual town meeting and see about getting funding. Now, we have two representatives from Eversource, sorry, here in the front, that are saying that they're hoping to start addressing some of these trees the first of the year. So I've heard tell of a possible special fall town meeting dealing with funding for the library project. If that's the case, why aren't we dealing, if there is a fall town meeting? Why aren't we dealing with funding for these trees now so that Eversource and the safety of the town residents and others that drive through the town can be addressed? And then my third comment is, we got the cost of removing the trees. But what about the cost of the fire department for responding? The cost of the police departments for responding? The cost of seeing the need to respond all off hours, weekends, holidays, you name it, on top of the cost of removing the tree? Let's be proactive and do it now before it costs three, four times the cost.
One more comment from Michael was the proponent on this, and then I think we need to move on to the agenda, because obviously this is, there's going to be additional hearings, there'll be a formal public hearing, but Michael, you had a comment?
First was, I do hope, just went forward, would you rather close to 6.200, if you need to buy a property? Not just lock in your property and do something about your commission, but then dealing with it. I'm also here because I'm one of your assessors, and conceivably, the building you might get from the town and the dead trees you might have are 90 feet, 279. It couldn't be higher than the tax bill. So I, I think that one reason the public safety committee wants to bring this forward to you, because after there was a long discussion, you have, this is a larger question of both law and fifth amendment as well, of taking trees as a value.
It's one of the regulations.
The trees you have, that's not sufficient to answer some of the questions. The other one is a request that, you know, we aren't actually tracking the ones, I don't know they were tracked, whether the trees that walked over, whether or not they were on the list of the trees that we were previously identifying. One of the interesting questions, which seems not over the top, a lot of trees do fall on the street, our, our, they show up more. How many of those that down the streets that you had responded were previously identified as dead trees? The one who paid the fine, may or may not have been, but oh, they had a very full, prepaid lead. So having that data in that list really did identify 90% of the fallen trees. Doesn't have a different benefit to identify these.
Perfect, thank you. Great, the next item on the agenda is the consideration and review of the draft general plan. Marion Neutra and John Glee for the planning board.
Marion Neutra, Neutra, 25 Prospect Street. I know you've been hearing about the general plan for a while now, and you're probably wondering why in the world is it not done? Well, it's not done because it was a huge undertaking. And I think in the end, we're doing it very well. And I think you'll be pleased with the outcome. I think it's worth the time spent to get it right, given the fact that it's increasingly important to have a good general plan for getting grants, for supporting legal positions, et cetera, as you've pointed out before, Paul. So I sent you at the end of June, I think early July, three sections, because you asked to get them piecemeal, to have time to read them. And in particular, you were interested in the town center section. So here we are with bated breath to see what you think of what we've done so far. Two of the sections, I hope you've had a chance to read them, have been to an editor and back. The, the editing and layout process is a bit iterative between me and the editor that we've hired, who's excellent, by the way. The town center section is still in my draft form. It's been reviewed by the planning board. They keep finding more things to do with it, even today. But, and so do I, actually, you know, it's easy to keep tweaking these things, but at some point, we want to get this finalized and done. So we hope you've had a chance to read all three, but in particular, the town center section, we're certainly open to suggestions. That's why we're here.
Terrific, I certainly focused on the town center report, and it's really well drafted, and the graphics are some of the best that I've seen. The overlay of the, the septic systems and wells was just, particularly in color, very helpful.
I should say, since you got that draft, I've strengthened that section a little bit. And I didn't want to keep sending you versions because you wouldn't have thanked me for it. But regarding that particular issue of town center water and sewer, we did add some language that I think strengthens that section a little bit. I got a comment that that map was, unless you've already seen it, which most of you have, it's hard to read and understand. So I built in a little explanation into the text. And if I can just read you a couple of sentences that were added to see if you agree with this. Because it's on page 14. Paragraph three begins with the words, "for many years, especially since the passage of Mass DEP Title V." That's the paragraph about the water and sewer problem. What I added to the end of that paragraph was, "map XX," I think it'll be map, it'll have a number. "Map number below shows that in the town center area, almost all the septic leaching fields that are colored solid red lie within the protected zones surrounding public or shared wells that are cross-hatched red," referring to the map. "Or private wells cross-hatched blue. Under Title V regulations, new wells or septic fields with such overlap would not be allowed. Septic contamination of town water, well water is not only a potential health threat, it could threaten town finances by forcing an expensive emergency infrastructure project that is not part of an overall town center plan." And I added that language, I'm reading it to you because I want to know if you approve it.
It's the first thing I read. The only thing I would add is also talk about how it's even more out of compliance on existing Sherburne Board of Health regulations. Even, it's so difficult to show so much, I remember it was the, what is it, the downtown water supply committee that actually came up with this map years ago. And you could show so many things, but we also have, the septic, many of the septic systems are too close to each other based on our current regulations. There's, there's about a dozen radiuses, or radii, that, that aren't in compliance in here. And I think that this does show it. And I know it's hard to throw the book out, but, you know, Title V is one thing. Then our board, our existing Board of Health regulations are even more stringent, and they're more out of compliance of that. Not just the overlapping of the, the water and the septic, even septic to each other, and wells to each other.
Thanks, I'll add that to that paragraph.
So Marion, one thing I didn't see in here, and I don't know if you've considered it in another section, but I didn't notice any discussion of the railroad and the impact of the railroad on the center of town and the potential disruption and difficulty the town could have if that railroad ever came back into frequent use in terms of traffic, in terms of disturbances, in terms of property values and a lot of other things. And I'm wondering, did you consider that? Is there a way to address that? Would the town want to have some type of direction it would take in the event the state ever said, hey, you know, we're thinking of reopening that line to commuter rail and freight traffic and everything else, and we're going to run 20 times a day through the center of Sherburne? I mean.
You know, that's, that's a good point, and we didn't grapple with it. The town center group that John worked with may have though, so.
Yeah, it was discussed, I think it got, I don't think it survived some editing. And it's mentioned in the circulation section, but good point, it should be, it should be discussed.
I just think it's, I mean, it may, it may never be a problem, but it also could be a really significant hidden issue if this played out a certain way, you know?
Yeah, and also it might be a real asset.
If it could be tied into the town center somewhere, sure.
Right.
Right, I mean, in, in general.
Yeah, commuter rail station would be a real asset.
You can move the depot back.
There were, there were other issues like this that we discussed and decided not to include, simply because it was too, like, speculative and kind of not, not useful to think about solutions when we didn't have a problem yet. Or we couldn't foresee exactly what the problem would be. So, that said, the plan is in a format and a highly interactive format. So it's easy to revise. And we plan to revisit it every five years.
Don't tell them that.
I mean, okay. It's not easy to revise, it's hard to revise.
I thought that was a suggestion. And the other, the other point I would make in here, in terms of the signage, and there was a recommendation for more lenient signage policy, and I don't know if that's feedback from the business community. I mean, I, I would say based on personal observation and zoning board experience, the signage rules we have aren't followed, they're essentially ignored. They're, they're burdensome because they require special permits and they require people to come back and forth. But even if they get a permit, they don't follow them, and people are throwing sandwich signs out and doing a lot of other things. There's not a lot of coordination there. So whether they're less burdensome, it might be that they're just more realistic and enforced. So, so that we have some, some policy, it's not, it's not, you know, sort of free rein, but it's also something that people can live with and it's realistic. That's just a suggestion.
You know, I, I think you've hit upon an internal contradiction in this, in this section that I've worried about a bit. In one place, we say that the town center's aesthetic value and sense of place would be very much enhanced if we had a town center signage style. And that would be a little bit draconian, but we'd have to impose some regulations to do that. And then in another place, we say it should be more lenient. So I think we haven't made completely clear, you know, what, what we're talking about there. I, I personally prefer not making it more lenient, but having a standards that give the town center a better aesthetic sense of place. But, that's only me.
So I had a couple of thoughts. First, I want to commend you on the plan and the incredible detail in here. It's good to see detail. And I like the idea that you have challenges and recommendations. I thought that was a nice way to present things. So you have the background, here's sort of the existing conditions, here are the challenges, and then here are some recommendations. Thought that was very effective communication, I commend you for that. There's continued praise and reference in here to the trail system. I want to recount to you, which I think I've said to you before, at a meeting in the State House with some state officials from the secretary's office of environmental affairs. They record Sherburne as having no trails, because our trails don't meet standards. And the standards that they want us to meet and have offered to give us money to help us meet is, you're excluding all disabled people from many of these trails. And that they believe that there should be inclusiveness and that people of all, of all different levels of, of growth and mobility and, and age and illness should be able to use the trails. To do that, they have to be elevated a little bit from where we are now. And I, you do have a sentence in here or two about that, but essentially, we have these old pathways that are in the woods that are too narrow, have too many roots and rocks and all that kind of stuff. So that from the state perspective, again, the, the message that they gave me was that they are ready to help the town of Sherburne any way we can, so that Sherburne can be on the map as having real trails. And so I would encourage that to be done where, where appropriate. Not every place in town would it be appropriate, but it's a message I wanted to pass on from, from the state on, on that subject. Then there's a section on page five, which said, "Consider roadway changes to improve rural scale and feel." And as I read this, I didn't understand it. So pardon me for being a lawyer who focuses on words on a page, but as I considered some of these things, like the first one. "Study the effects of altering current lanes to a consistent width." Now, as far as I know, the traffic lanes in town are pretty consistent. It's the road width that's not consistent. But maybe we have, I mean, there are state standards about how wide lanes should be and how, you can't have five-foot lanes without cars hitting each other. So, but I think you meant road width, but in any event, having lanes and adding turning lanes, it's not, it's physically not possible. Particularly where you, you suggest like having a turning lane into C and L Frosties. I mean, that's a great idea, but how could the geometry of what we have to deal with there allow for turning lanes on top of travel lanes, on top of sidewalks, and on top of bicycle lanes without widening the street? It didn't seem like, it would, let me put it another way, it would be great to have all these things. I, I just didn't know if.
I'm not sure where that is.
This was a realistic.
Is this on page five?
Yes.
Recommendation D you're talking about? Right.
You don't like my part.
Yeah.
Well, it's a reference to new traffic-like technology to facilitate traffic flow at intersections and businesses. And that again raised the question in my mind of traffic lights every 100 feet. So there'd be one at Powder Lane, one at Village Way, one at, I mean, how, when you had lights and new traffic technology and S's on intersections.
I think what was.
Raised a lot of questions in my mind about what we were doing in the downtown area with all these lights and intersections.
I think.
I can respond if you want, or I can wait.
No, these are just thoughts for.
You're making.
Reactions to.
Good points.
To maybe tighten up the language.
I know what I mean.
But I, as I read, I didn't, I didn't know what, what it was. So even if you explained to me what it was, my point isn't to find out what you meant, but to suggest to you that if it's not clear to me, it's not, maybe not clear to others who might read this. And I would rather see unanimous support for this thing than to have somebody come in with this objection that having traffic lights every 10 feet is going to change the character of the town and all that kind of stuff. So, just trying to.
Is there any place you go that has a traffic light every 10 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
There are.
Well, so I, I, and, and another section where we talk about the town. Well, so, I, 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 and, and in another section where we talk about the town center with traffic and pedestrian bike paths, we want both, and they can't do both. So, we suggest, it needs to be studied. There, in the, we have a complete streets program that does, we do talk about it in the intro section, and then it comes up, so, a few places, and then it comes up very, in much greater detail in the circulation section, that, that addresses the ADA compliance, our, our complete streets policy, the town is, that you guys have already adopted, approved.
You got no word for it.
Yeah, and we got a lot of money from it already, is moving in that direction, but that can be clarified in, in here to your...
Well, you, you, you mentioned here the sidewalk on the east side, and I can't say how many times I've asked to have that sidewalk built, and other members of the board have asked to have that sidewalk built. And we have money, we have, we have the blessing of the state, we have all kinds of good things, but this wall that's in the way, and the, the owner of the wall has agreed to remove it as, as soon as we're told, we tell him to remove it. Now, he now says he can't remove it because it's in historic district, and he hasn't got the historic district approval, and so, and so on and so on. And so, the months go by and the years go by, and we don't have a sidewalk. And I don't know where we are in that, but that, that's not the general plan. The general plan says there should be a sidewalk there.
Right.
We're in agreement getting a sidewalk there. We all want to see a sidewalk there. It's just, doing it is not an easy thing.
So, so another part of this is the implementation tables to address doing it. So, I can, I'm happy to talk about the wall. It's only about 10 feet. It's really of no consequence in the overall project, which we now have money for. So, I'm not concerned about it. It's an action item, but it's not a big deal. It's only 10 feet, and we may not actually wind up replacing it. We might just grade that, that small section, because of the other wall that's related to the sidewalk continuing on north. So, that's that. But, but to your point, these things need to be made clear. So, in the roadway section on, on lane width, I, I understand your point versus pavement width. And the traffic light technology refers to the traffic light at the intersection of Elliott and North Main, so we'll make that clear.
We also talked about pedestrian intermittent lights, you know, with pedestrian. We already have one of those, but there are other places where they would be good safety features.
Yeah.
Where's the traffic light language?
Uh, it's on page five.
Page five of the town center.
It's in recommendation D.
D two.
D two.
Yeah.
Right, we weren't clear there about what we...
Yeah, because they're doing more and more. Framingham was one of the first to use it in the state on a non-highway. It's called adaptive signals. It actually uses like, yeah, no signals and no timing is ever identical as the next one. It reads how long the queues are, works.
So, we can program it and to literally make a space in the traffic so you can get in and out of the post office using that traffic light.
The People's Republic of Cambridge has done a very nice job with...
Yeah. But, by the way, so, so this idea of this traffic light came from the complete streets program, which we are, are participating in and have got funding for. The traffic light is next on our list to apply for, but we've got engineering work and things to do that, to apply for a grant for that. So, that's in here, so we need to make it clear what we're talking about there. And with the trail, our complete streets policy says we will make our, our sidewalks and trails accessible as we are able to, which was really a sticking point for us to apply for the complete streets program in the past. And they changed, the state changed the complete streets program so that we could do things, so towns like us could do things like this, where we have a lot more trails than sidewalks. Having said that, though, the sidewalk grant we got will be ADA compliant. It also enables access, the grant includes funds to make the access that the conservation committee has now negotiated with the rising tide development on Whitney, on Whitney Street, so that we can have an ADA compliant access to the Upper Charles Trail. So, then we need, then we need to finish the trail itself. But, so we'll, the, the complete streets program is giving us that, and that's what this is referring to. Again, we can make what I just said more specific, so it's...
Well, you were pretty specific in the recreation section. Recommendation D three is...
Yeah, we're trying not to be completely redundant, but in, in examples like this, people are not necessarily going to...
Right.
Some people may not actually read the whole thing.
Right. I should also mention, just to add to the ADA compliance issue, which is a big issue in Sherburne. We, and we totally agree that it would be great, and we'd like to have more trails ADA accessible. I, I've just finished the open space and recreation plan. This is jumping ahead a little bit on the, on the agenda. But, part of that was a, an ADA accessibility inventory, a, a compliance evaluation, self-evaluation. And it's about, I don't know, a lot of pages long, explaining what can be made ADA accessible and what can't. Unfortunately, the, the great majority of our trails that you see in the recreation system, it's just not possible to make them ADA compliant. You know, they're, they're woodland trails, rocks, roots.
Yeah. So, so what we're doing, though, is we're, I mean, the Upper Charles Trail is a slam dunk to make that ADA compliant. So, that's the first place to get, so we'll have a, a ADA compliant trail. And the next thing is this, the sidewalk on the, on the east side will be ADA, ADA compliant. So, and, and then our policy says we'll do, we'll add ADA compliant modifications as we're able. That's our, and our policy says we'll do that, so.
And it's in the town center that we're most likely to be able to do that. You know, another part of the plan, I forget where it is, talks about walkways throughout the town center, linking north and south town center, that are ADA compliant.
We want to be inclusive of everybody, all our citizens.
Yeah.
So, they have...
Elderly, people with babies.
Baby carriages, wheelchairs, whatever it is. Let's make this a, a community of, that's open and, and available to everybody. But, moving on then to recommendation E, which is support additional uses of the ball fields for other activities. And you didn't identify which ball field, but I, I wanted to highlight an issue for you that came up in, I believe, the July meeting of the board. I've now looked at the taking order and deed for the Jamison Fields, and they were taken for parkland purposes. And because of that, this, what's called an Article 97 issue, you cannot use these fields for other uses, except those that are consistent with open space and things like that. Without an act of the legislature and requires two-thirds roll call vote of both houses, and you have to replicate the property somewhere else in town with two times the amount of acreage, it's just, it's a, it's a lot of rigmarole. And I, I mention this because there was talk about using that for sewers, which are inconsistent with Article 97, but water is not. So, there are some uses that are consistent with, with Article 97, and there's some uses that aren't.
That's a good point.
But by saying support additional use of the ball fields for other activities, I just wanted to highlight that that is restricted land, so you've got to be careful about what these other uses are.
If we said other recreational activities...
Oh, that's fine. Other recreational uses is fine.
Because that's actually what we had in mind. Thank you. That's good.
I do have a couple of comments if Paul's...
Just see if there are any others.
Is it my turn?
Okay. On the issue of financing options for public water and septic system activity within a strictly limited town center district, this is on page 17. I just want to highlight the fact that we've been working hard on the state level to provide state funds for these kinds of things. There are state funds that are available. So, it doesn't have to be funded by Betterment's or by the taxpayers. There are other alternatives.
So, we could add a point under there to seek state funding, or...
Yes.
Explore state funding options.
Of course. I, I can't say what funds will be available by the time we get around to actually doing the action item, but currently, we're working on trying to have funds available to meet needs like this. So, where a town has, as Eric described, the, the zone ones of wells and septic systems and all of that, there should be a way to get some state aid on this.
Thank you. That's a good...
Yeah, but I mean, D, the preceding, D says just that.
D two says conduct cost-benefit analysis under alternative financing scenarios, which I would assume alternative financing scenarios would include state...
Yeah, you might want to add a specific one under D four, or state funding.
Make a comment in E.
Right.
Yeah, either way.
My comment caps on that.
In D.
Yeah, I mean, in, in D, I guess.
And then, can we go onto cultural resources, or just want to stick with the town center?
I have some comments on the town center portion.
Why don't we finish town center first, then? Go ahead, Eric.
Just two minor and one significant comment, whatever. One, thank you for including on page 17, E, because, you know, we've been kicking that around forever to make a decision to proceed or not to proceed. I almost think you added that for me, but thank you. Two, just so you know, that these, these recommendations actually involve the formation of four different committees. I don't know if that can be consolidated. A town center's option committee, a consortium, a town center implementation committee, and a design review board. And I think that sometimes gets a little cumbersome when you have that, so you might want to reconsider if you can consolidate any of those. And my third comment, I guess it's really more to the board. I want to go on top of what Paul said, is that about, I, I'd like this board to readdress the issue of the sidewalk along the east side of Main Street. Now, with, oh, with, whatever it is, Abbey Road in there, we have scores of residents all over 55 and range that still have to cross two of the busiest roads in Metro West in order to walk to downtown. And John remembers when I was on the planning board, I fought for two things, to get actual, the developer of Abbey Road to put funding and provisions to allow the easement for it in there. I think he's on board to do that sidewalk, increases the value of those properties. I believe it was only at the meeting we were at where the historic commission made a, made a, I think it was a non-unanimous opinion that that was a historic wall, and that is the only thing holding back a sidewalk at that location. We're missing out in school, on many funding grants, including complete streets, mass works, and mass, and housing choice grants, which are all to support infrastructure to support housing. And what do we have here? We have new housing. We have an elderly population that, that can't even walk to downtown because of an opinion that that's a historic wall. And so, I'd like that, the board to consider that in an upcoming meeting, is to reevaluate what it's going to take to get a sidewalk along the east side of Main Street connecting that downtown. There's even funding mechanisms through DPU to actually make a, a rail, a rail crossing there as well, a pedestrian rail crossing. And I think these are all lost opportunities.
Yeah, thank you.
And that would be a very significant, that'd be something we could really wrap our arms around and would directly help a very significant population of this town.
So, it's in the plan, and we have funding.
Yeah, and the engineering is done.
Yeah.
So, yeah, exactly.
So, what, if anything, is holding it up?
An opinion that it's a historic wall.
Historical commission.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, you know, in our last conversation, we said, we talked, the planning board would talk with the historic district commission.
Even if it's opinion that it's an historic feature...
Sorry.
All you have to do is apply for a certificate of appropriateness.
So, we just, the town just spent money to get our engineer to mark out what actually needs to be done to move, how much the wall needs to be moved, so we can actually see it, because we've talked about it, we've done drawings and things. So, it's now been marked out with orange sticks. You can go look at it. That just happened. So, now it's actually marked out, we can see, we may not, maybe all we do is disassemble a 10-foot worth, the last 10 feet of that wall, and grade it. That's it. It's nothing in terms of cost.
And reassemble.
But, but now that, we just spent money, we just got the engineering done just in the last month, so that we can visually see what has to be done. So, now we're ready to go talk to the historic district commission. It's, we're moving along, and we did, we did just get the complete streets grant to fund the whole construction. So, the funding is done. And we have just, just in the last month, I think, it was, within the last month, got the engineer to mark where this has to be done, where it has to be moved. So, we're ready to go talk to the historic district.
Takes it to the railroad tracks, pretty much?
It takes it to, to Elliott Street.
Oh, does it really? Okay.
The engineering study just goes to the railroad tracks.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah. Eric, anything else on the town center?
No, that was it.
Please, let's move on into the cultural.
Let me just thank Eric. I agree 100%. Thank you for your words. That's appreciated. On the cultural center, I had a couple of comments. Under the library, it's on page four. It says, "The project's financing reflects the commitment of the entire community to the library. 3.6 million from the state, 3.8 million for private grants, and 1 million voted by town meeting." The issue I want to flag here is, first, I believe that we have appropriated more than a million. I think there was... So, that number needs to be corrected.
Thank you.
And because this may not come out for a couple of months, and we're talking about a town meeting in the fall, having a specific number here of 1 million, where it might go even higher, that would render the plan obsolete almost by the time you get it printed. So, I'm wondering, do you really need this sentence here that outlines who contributed, what, if you want to say that there was a contribution from the state and 3.0 million from private gifts, and, and leave it at that towards, towards the project? I think that's a better way to present it than to focus on the fact that the town... At one point in time, this was factually correct, I just, I don't think it's going to be correct.
Yeah, it, it stands very well without that, so that's a good point. We'll take it out. The sentence will end, 3.8 million from private gifts, period.
And then, on page 12, you say in item E for second bullet, "Consider the use of the Sherburne Fund." And I don't recall that being defined anywhere. So, if someone's reading that, they think that the Sherburne Fund, that suggests that there's some kind of slush fund that we're hiding over here that we can dip into and apply. So, I'm wondering if you could expand that a little bit to identify what this, this Sherburne Fund is.
Maybe nothing more than parrots of private philanthropy.
Yeah, consider use of private philanthropy would be better.
Yeah.
That was actually written by one of the...
So, Mr. Chair, I wonder if, since we've got guests out there and a couple more very heavy agenda items, if we should postpone some of this, or...
I'm done.
Terrific. You're much to giving way too much credit to the editor. These are written wonderfully. They really are. They're clear. I completely agree with Paul of the way you've framed it with challenges and recommendations. You can tell that hundreds of hours have gone into drafting this, and kudos. It's really a terrific piece of work. So, thank you, Mary Ann and John.
Thank you. Good pause.
Thanks. Yeah, I have, I can say just two words about the open space and recreation plan, because I want to solicit a letter from the Board of Select, from the Select Board. I want to solicit a letter from the Board of Select, from the select board in support before we send it to MAPC. You saw an earlier version of the whole thing. The whole thing is now complete, appendices and all. I'm gathering a few more edits on it. It's quite a big document, so you can tell me how you want to see it next. It has gone to the editor. I'm going back and forth with the editor now to, you know, correct his corrections. So within, I would say, a week or so, I should have a good PDF of the whole thing. And you've seen it already, so it's not like I'm dumping it all on you at once. But my preference would be to send you the whole thing, get comments back in a couple of weeks' time, and then if you approve it with your comments, with your edits, I'd like to have a letter from the Board of Selectmen supporting the plan. Because we need that to send it to the state.
And make a motion that, you know, if David drafts something, we could collectively sign it.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I'd like to see the final version.
Yeah, you've got to see the final.
Yeah.
So if it's okay, I will send that as soon as it's ready. Okay, thanks.
Terrific. The next agenda item is a request for funding from the Conservation Commission to draft regulations overseeing wastewater discharge from larger local projects. John, I don't know if the planning board is identified as a board that's taken a look at this. I don't know if you want to be here for this discussion and Board of Health as well.
Okay. Hi, thanks. Neil Kessler, Conservation Commission. And as you said, Chuck, I'm here to request some funds. So I just wanted to basically break down for you what we're asking for, why we're asking for it, and kind of what the state of things are right now. So we are requesting up to one thousand five hundred dollars from the state portion of the conservation filing fees account that we have. And I guess, I don't know too much about the financial piece of this, but basically it's money that comes from the state for any filing fees and it goes in a fund for us and so for the Conservation Commission, but you disburse those funds to us if we request them. So, and we are going to be using the money for the hiring of a, basically an environmental legal consultant, probably a lawyer, to help us draft some modifications to our existing regulations. We want to do that because, basically, our rationale is we've been doing a bunch of, not a bunch of, but we've been doing some regulation changes to make them stronger, to make them not more protective of wetlands, but more sort of objective and legally sound and scientifically sound. Like we did some regulation changes last year to beef up our no alteration zone performance standards and things like that. And with sort of changes that are happening in town around larger projects like the EA zoning change and also some lessons learned from forty B project like the fields where we didn't have a whole lot of control over when larger projects were discharging a lot of wastewater that would potentially reach jurisdictional areas, buffer zones and wetlands. We wanted at a local level for local projects to be able to have some mechanism by which we could have some insight and input into how that wastewater was discharged and how it would affect wetlands. So we're asking for that money because we've sort of did a little bit of discussion and we think that we can craft some regulations which target not wastewater systems, but actual wastewater, which is a little bit tricky because you don't necessarily know where it's going to end up. And so we want a little bit of help, legal help, to sort of make it so that it's scientifically sound, legally sound, not overly burdensome to any sort of applicant, and, you know, give the applicant some concrete performance standards so that they can build a system that if, you know, they meet our performance standards, then we consider it's not going to have an impact on wetlands and groundwater and all the rest of it. So we did solicit feedback, both formally and informally, from the Board of Health and from the planning board. And basically, what we're trying to craft with this legal consultant is some regulatory language change that would take into account those concerns and our own. So that's what I'm, that's what we're doing and what we're asking for, so.
Terrific. I have an initial question. This actually may be for, as much for Paul and Mike as anyone else. Hiring an environmental legal consultant, is this work that KP Law could do? Wouldn't it fall under the retainer?
Ask David about the retainer, I don't know. It doesn't hurt to ask him, but I don't.
And I just don't know if KP's got the kind of expertise in drafting these kind of regs, but. I don't know if the other of you have a sense of that.
There are some really pretty good environmental experts out in the world. They, I'm not aware of any at KP Law. That doesn't mean they, they might have them, I just don't. But the big names are not at KP Law.
I mean, we can certainly hook them up with someone at K and P to review it before they go out to another consultant.
How much are you looking for?
How much money?
Up to fifteen hundred.
Up to fifteen hundred dollars. It's not, I mean, we've had some sort of conversations with a couple of different people and part of it is trying to figure out who's got the expertise because it's a little bit of an unusual circumstance in the sense that we're trying to regulate wastewater, which, like I said, there's probabilities about it where it'll end up, whether it'll be in jurisdiction, but there's, it's not the same as a site plan which says the building's going to be here. So having somebody who can do, who can sort of walk that line, like we need somebody who's got the expertise and it's possible, like Amy at KP would have that, it's possible she might not. And so it would be something we'd like to try to have some, a couple of conversations with people and just, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if it's covered under our retainer and they have the expertise, obviously, that's preferable. Two other questions, what feedback have you gotten from the Board of Health and the planning board? And the second question is what impact would these changes in the regulations have on existing ongoing projects in town?
Well, let's see. So from, and like I said, some of it's formal and some of it's informal, but from planning board, I think that the three things that I took away from their comments back to us were that they wanted to make sure it was not overly burdensome, that it wasn't going to sort of stop a project, that sort of thing. And that it was that there were very clear performance standards, so it wasn't, the applicant wasn't left guessing whether they were going to meet them or not until after we sort of figured it out, that they wanted some, I think Mary Ann had mentioned, like scientific assays, like some sort of really concrete stuff that we could put in there that says, okay, if you meet these standards, then, you know, it's okay and wetlands won't be impacted. And Board of Health was a little bit more informal, but we ended up just talking a little bit about when some things, when we don't know something's in our jurisdiction, we can't assert jurisdiction until we know. And so we talked a little bit about just, you know, and like I said, informally, just talked a little bit about potentially what their involvement's going to be with larger projects and wastewater, whether they would be sort of requiring any kind of AOIs like, you know, groundwater contour, elevation, flow maps, that sort of stuff that we could then use as a means to determine whether or not something would have some likelihood of ending up in jurisdiction. And again, that's why we want the legal help, because it's like, you know, I'm saying these words, but I don't necessarily know exactly what they mean. And so we really want to do something that was legally sound and scientifically sound as well. So those are the kinds, that's the kind of feedback we got.
So in the end result here, and maybe you said this and I apologize, is this going to be like the result in a proposed changes to a bylaw, you know, that go before a town meeting or change in regulations, like what's?
So the process for the two is different. The bylaw's more cumbersome and I think, I think if this legal consultant were to recommend that we make it as a bylaw change, we would probably take it down that road, which is a longer process. If they think that it would be sort of legally normal, that's not the word, but legally sort of usual or defensible, to do it as a regulation change, I think we'd rather go down that road. That still requires us to have a hearing, get feedback, take that into account before we craft changes.
Okay, just kind of curious, because I'm a little interested in what the effect of change would be. I mean, that just goes, my second question is, has there been an issue? Has there been an issue where either wastewater or septic leach field has actually impacted conservation resource area?
Well, so the way it works right now is that if, so regulatorily, Wetland Protection Act at state level, the way it works right now is that if there is, if there is a wastewater discharge system that's outside the legal setbacks at the state level, but wastewater ends up in a jurisdictional area, the only thing you can do is wait until it happens and then issue an enforcement order, which is very difficult to deal with because once something's in groundwater, you know, it can take years to even get there, like how are you going to fix it? It's like almost impossible to fix. And so, and so this is more of a, partly a response to the Field at Sherburne Project, which the commission still has concerns about the fact that they've got two hundred feet up gradient of a wetland, they are going to discharge eighty-five hundred gallons per day, eighty-five hundred gallons per day of wastewater that their own sort of analysis shows is going to end up in the wetland. So we know there's going to be an effect, but we couldn't do anything about it because for a forty B, it's only the state regulations that apply. And so what we're trying to do really is avoid that kind of circumstance with a project of that size or bigger, and also smaller, but not residential ones, but some, to set some threshold of gallonage per day. And really trying to, for projects that are local, which means our local regulations apply, we are really trying to just have some input when an NOI comes before us and say, well, look, you've situated here or you're releasing, you know, you're doing some treatment, you have X amount of contaminants, but we'd like this to sort of be reduced or we'd like it to be sort of positioned in a different place or something of that nature.
If I could add some things here, one is that we at the state level are giving money to four communities to address too much nitrogen in Pleasant Bay on the Cape, and that turns out to all be coming from septic systems.
All of it.
Because of where they were located in four different communities. So we're having to spend a lot of taxpayer money to support four communities to try and figure out how to clean up an asset of the Commonwealth. And it's frustrating to have to come in and clean up the spilt milk when it would have been better way back when to not let the milk get spilled to begin with. So that's my first little observation. My second observation is that you're basically asking for petty cash out of your own money that comes from the state filing fees. And I have no problem with hiring lawyers to have, look at this, and if they say you can't do it or you have to do it some other way, there is nobody better than a lawyer to tell you that. Because if you consult with all different boards and committees and you hear all these opinions, none of that is going to be as strong and direct as a lawyer telling you no or yes or whatever. So I would recommend that we authorize them to spend up to fifteen hundred dollars to address whatever concerns they have. And if, if the lawyer tells you, you can't do what you want to do, I assume that you're going to follow that advice.
Yes, absolutely.
So I have a little different take on it. I would suggest we go to Copelman and Page first and find out if they can do under the bylaw what they're trying to do here. This, to me, seems like it's Board of Health type regulation. You're regulating the performance of a septic system. That's something that's squarely a Board of Health responsibility. It's not a Conservation Commission role, and I don't think our bylaw authorizes it. And Neil's admitted that there's not any science that he can translate into a regulation now. I don't think hiring a lawyer to do science is a very good idea at all. I don't want to spend fifteen hundred dollars, even if it's their money, Paul, to encourage a hundred thousand dollars' worth of legal fees spent on defending permit denials and permit conditions. I think we've got a good wetlands bylaw, we've got a good Conservation Commission, we have regulations, and if this isn't in their purview, then it's not in their purview. And I don't think we have to, you know, try to get a lawyer to tell us that. We should have Copelman and Page review the ordinance or the bylaw first, and then if this is squarely something they should be doing, then maybe we get a scientist who can figure out what the science is to set up standards, and then you're, then you're dealing with regulations. But we've got this backwards if we're trying to regulate first. That makes no sense to me.
Can I just respond to what you said? Yeah, I'm not saying there's no science to it, it's just that we don't, we aren't necessarily clear on things, like that's part of writing the regulation is figuring out what science applies. There's plenty of science that studies septic influence on wetlands. I mean, the Cape is a classic example. They're going to, they're, you know, they're poisoning their own water and they, you know, they're talking about this lodging tax and all this to try to pay for wastewater treatment because they're just going to have to do something other than putting it in the ground, which is what they've been doing. So sort of bring that science together in one place and have it be, relate to some kind of regulatory stuff, I think is advisable. And the other thing I would say is that the reason I think it is within the Conservation Commission's purview is that at the Board of Health level, it's more about drinking water standards and that kind of stuff. And the things that don't get covered there are things that affect the interests of the, both the Wetland Protection Act state level and then also our local interests, which is, you know, wildlife habitat, I mean, private, private and public drinking water supply is one of the interests of the act. That's part of what would be affected here. I very much actually think that wastewater does affect wildlife habitat and other interests of the act, so I think it does, from that perspective, it comes within our purview.
Sure.
So from a Board of Health perspective, it would be really helpful to have some legal input on this because the Fields at Sherburne decision by the courts either reflected that they didn't understand what was being done with the four separate studies that showed that there would be significant threat to the wells that were going to be on that property for that project. But they didn't rule only on that. They ruled that we didn't have the right to conduct this study. We didn't require the study, the studies we've done in the town that followed the applicant to see, and they pretty much came up with the same answers that the town came up with, that the citizens group came up with, and that peer review just came up with, plus it was, made four studies, all pointing to the same thing. But the ruling by the state was that we couldn't require that. We didn't require it. I think it was a real misinterpretation of the situation. We would like to find, and we have requirements in our regulations for environmental impact studies to be done for projects other than the same kind of, or similar. So really, it was an outside of our boundaries, but we need something put into how we can strengthen that so that it's not misinterpreted in the future about something that could potentially be some dangerous to people that are reliving a drinking water. So that's one piece. The other piece is for larger systems that are regulated at the state level, and I filled out these applications for clients for groundwater discharge, we're required to look at the travel time of the contaminants to any public water supplies within a certain radius. Says nothing about private water supplies. So there's a hole at the state level for the same kinds of analyses, only looking at public water supplies, but that's not going to be the case in Sherburne. Lots of private water supplies.
Those are undergrounded.
Or your project. So it would be nice for the Board of Health to have some assistance with what we would need to do to address this.
But neither of those issues.
For us, we're looking at how those contaminants are traveling towards drinking water supplies and then how that dovetails with the same analyses used commonly with this.
But neither of those points are necessarily addressed by what he's talking about because you're, you're talking about drinking water supplies, which is not necessarily jurisdictional to Conservation Commission's. Right?
But they're receptors. The idea is that they're both receptors, and the analyses that lead to this understanding of wastewater discharges in the ground is the dynamic of what's happening in the ground and where that's going. And it applies to either, so either it's a well or it's a wetlands.
But you should be doing that. That shouldn't be something conservation does only when there's a buffer zone or a floodplain or a wetland involved. If you're concerned about drinking water supplies, then you're concerned about drinking water supplies. So this is, this is a backdoor form of regulation to get at what you're talking about. I think, I think if you're going to do it as a Board of Health, you may have the authority to do that or you may be able to get the authority to do that, but I don't, I don't think.
I don't think we could regulate the wetlands as a receptor.
No, but you can regulate the performance, you would regulate the performance of the wastewater treatment system.
But only for things they really.
do that, or you may be able to get the authority to do that. But I don't, I don't think.
I don't think we could regulate the wetlands as a receptor.
No, but you can regulate the perform, you would regulate the performance of the wastewater treatment system.
But only for things that relate to drinking water, where that would not cover some of the concerns and some of the interests of the local bylaw and also the state.
Well, Daryl was just talking about drinking water, if I understood it correctly.
But just as an example of a sort of a sensitive down gradient receptor. So she's got, from the Board of Health perspective, what is relevant or within her purview. And then for the Conservation Commission, we have different things. There's overlap because one of the interests is private, public and private drinking water supply, but we have others, which they may regulate for contaminants of emerging concern like antibiotics, and that may not matter to us at all. But there may be things that affect wildlife habitat that don't affect drinking water, that do affect us and do affect the interests of both the local bylaw and the state.
I'd love to hear what Copeland and Page says. I just don't think you have jurisdiction as a Conservation Commission over activity that's outside your jurisdictional area.
Yeah, I'd like to share that view. The first question is for Copeland and Page to answer that. And the second is whether or not, if they do, they have the expertise to do it. George, what are you going to say?
And based on what Daryl said, it almost sounds, as I agree with Mike, it sounds like something that would be more the Board of Health to look into than the Conservation Commission on the regulation of wastewater leaving a system.
Well, to be fair, wastewater leaving a system is within the Wetland Protection Act. It's also regulated there. There's an assumption that if your setback is 50 feet from, from a jurisdictional area, then the interests of the act are protected. But wastewater is regulated within the Wetland Protection Act as it pertains to interests of the act. So it is relevant to us. And I, and again, I'm not saying, the thing is, is I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we should assert jurisdiction. I have the same question, Mike, that you do. I think that what, what I'm saying is, is that if there is a way for us to credibly legally do it, we'd like to explore that. I'm not interested in racking up hundreds of thousands of dollars of legal bills defending some, you know, half-baked idea about, you know, stopping this or regulating that. I think for us, it's more of a, of a thing where we see a hole in the current local and state level regu, or regulations or bylaw and Wetland Protection Act, that we'd like to have some ability for local projects where home rule can be more protective than the state, where we can have some authority to have an influence over what's going into our wetlands. That's all.
That's it. I mean, would you consider allowing them to move ahead with the $1,500, in order to date lawyer to, to look at it, on the provision that comes back to this board and that whatever opinion comes out of that is reviewed by Copeland and Page? It's a chicken and egg type thing, you know, but.
I, I think it makes more sense to ask, just ask, have us ask Copeland.
I'm just not sure about the question. Like, when you get something, now you have something to provide an opinion on, whereas that kind of, what are we going to ask them? We're going to ask them, like, can we do this? Whereas there, you actually have a document. I'm assuming the lawyer's going to come up with something, going to come up with an opinion, and then have that opinion reviewed.
I agree. I'd just rather not spend the $1,500 if I would go to Copeland first.
I agree.
I think that's the right order to do it.
As long as we can devise a good question. That's why I come up with, you know, I've, I've read scores of legal opinions, and the softer the question, the softer the answer.
But I think, I think the question, Neil just averted the question. He said he doesn't know whether they have jurisdiction to regulate outside of their jurisdictional area based on discharge that might get into the jurisdictional area. So let's ask Copeland that question. What, what can they do to regulate outside their jurisdictional area effects of wastewater?
So, can I make a suggestion?
Let me say one thing. I think it's going to be soft because one of the things that we, I've run into is discharges into a stormwater system that discharges to a wetland, and Conservation Commissions happen to be able to regulate that, even if you're.
DT regulates that. It's outstanding resource water.
No, no, no.
They regulate under that, under that rule.
And on the new NITDs, actually, a town can actually regulate it. But it comes under the Conservation Commission. It's a resource area.
But that's a point source. That's a different issue.
So.
Right. But it's still an action outside of a resource area.
So just want to reiterate that I think it's, it's a no-brainer to spend the money. I realize you guys are going to vote a different way. But water is a really important issue for this town. That's a finite resource. If we lose it, we lose it for good. The amount of money is de minimis. The question shouldn't be defined by us at the Board of Selectment level. It should be defined by the Conservation Commission so they can get the answers that they want and need and have to be comfortable with. And I'm not sure the Copeland and Page is the water experts that, that they really need. There are firms out there, and I could mention some, but I don't want to give free advertising to people. But there are firms out there who really know this stuff, and Copeland and Page doesn't have that.
There's a threshold issue. Before you go to a John Whitten, or somebody like that, there's a threshold issue of whether our existing bylaw gives the Conservation Commission, under any circumstances, the ability to regulate on the basis of activity that's outside of a jurisdictional area.
I don't agree. The bylaw is changeable at town meeting. And the question is under the.
Then we would have to change it before we spent money to develop a regulation.
First you have to find out.
We're saying the same thing. First you have to find out.
You have to have a knowledgeable lawyer tell us how to do it, not a binary question. Is the document that the town adopted 12 years ago sufficient by itself, without any changes, to accomplish what they're proposing to do? The question is, if you want to protect the wetland resources from activity that's happening outside the resource, the buffer zone, can there be words written that would be upheld by a court?
That's great. That's another question for Copeland. So that's part two of the question. That's great.
But if, if we're.
I mean, the fact that we're having this discussion even, Paul, shows that there's uncertainty here, and we ought to have that uncertainty resolved first before we get into the scientific, technical details of it.
That's, he's here asking for $1,500 to pursue the inquiry. What's wrong with giving him?
I think he's at step three or four. And you may never be able to get to step three or four because we have to settle steps one and two first. And if we start at step three and four, we are going to be sued. We are going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's money that the town could instead be spending on taking trees down or protecting water supplies or doing 100 other things. I just, the track record here is not good. And I would rather see the, the, the town council determine whether the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction to do it, and if not, whether they can get jurisdiction by amending the bylaw. And then we go to town meeting and see if the town wants to amend the bylaw, if they need to. If they don't, and Copeland comes back and says, absolutely, you can do it under your current bylaw, then we're on to Neil's question and we, and we get the scientific answer.
I think we're not that far apart. The difference is, any reputable lawyer, if you go into any reputable lawyer and you ask them a tech, a very highly technical question, the first thing the lawyer is going to figure out is, before you put the cupola on the building, do you have the foundation? That's inherent in the question. It's going to be answered. All I'm saying is, let them have competent counsel do it, not, not, or let them choose what counsel he wants to do.
It's going to be a very inexpensive counsel. You have $1,500 to put the cupola on and the, and the foundation, Paul. So let's, let's get the threshold stuff out of the way so we can spend the $1,500 on the technical stuff if we need to.
I agree. I respectfully dissent and would support the Conservation Commission.
Can I just respond to that? So the one, my only concern, I, I have no problem with asking town council this. The only problem is, we started the discussion with everybody here in the room saying that we weren't sure they were competent to write the regulation. And because, I think as Paul's alluding to, writing the regulation in a way that is legally sound would take somebody who knows whether or not it can be done or should be done.
That's, that's step three or four. The first question is whether or not you have the jurisdiction.
Right. But how can they answer it? If they, if they're not competent to write it so that it would be, how can they answer the question? That's my only concern.
Jurisdiction question.
It's a jurisdictional question. The preliminary question, before you even get to the technical question, is, is this within the jurisdiction of the CONCOM, or does it need to be a Board of Health regulation? And that, and no one better than Copeland and Page is to answer that question.
And the only thing I would say is that the problem, part of the problem with writing the regulation at all would be how to establish the jurisdiction because it is uncertain. That's why I would want more of, potential for more expertise. The only other thing I would say is that, would it be possible for you to approve the spending of the $1,500? Well, two things. One is, I would like to be, like to have the Conservation Commission talk to town council so that we can frame the question in the way that we're sort of viewing it, A, to get the answer that you're suggesting we get first. And B, the only thing I would also request would be for you to move tonight to approve the $1,500 if they come back and say that it is possible. So we don't have to come back.
I'll make that motion.
You know, I don't want to call $1,500 no money at all, but I've just been burned so many times when you ask a vague question. And I know it's, I know it's different than you said, Mike, what I talked about, but I gave an example of a gray zone where I think it's, it's, you're going to ask them a soft question, you're going to get a soft answer. I do think that. I think to specify the question, as I say, we want to do this, can we do this, I think helps quite a bit. And I think the $1,500 bucks will go to that. You know, I would support either authorizing that, or maybe going back to the commission you said, having them form a good question that can go to council.
Why don't we draft the question? We'll send it over to you for review before we send it to Copeland. But I just, the, the order's back as per, the first question I want to know is whether or not CONCOM has the jurisdiction to do it. If not, it may be a Board of Health issue. But I don't want to spend the $1,500 until we have that.
I mean, to me, this is so different than John Higley coming in and saying, the planning board wants to regulate septic systems because they might affect, you know, some, you know, aesthetics, or health, or whatever. Well, do they have that jurisdiction or not? They don't. It's a closer question with CONCOM.
That becomes a bylaw change, not a regulation change that I think you then have to go to the, I, I think it's important, you said, well, it's a burdensome thing to go to the town and change a bylaw. But I think it's important when you're changing something as big as what you're thinking about here, that it goes to the townspeople and not just a regulation change done by the Conservation Commission.
There's no question. If we go to step five, we're actually going to change something, I'd be much more comfortable with a bylaw versus a regulation. It's got to go be, it's got to have a vote.
I mean, whatever direction it goes, that's fine. I mean, if, if.
But if it's a regulation, if the Conservation Commission passed a regulation, let me tell you something, we have nothing to say about that. This is the Board of Selectment. We appoint commissioners, but they can pass their own regulations, just like the Board of Health passes its own regulations. So if they want to pass their regulations and pass their regulations, and we have to defend them, we have to defend them. I don't think we should make that easy or start at that point. I think we should start systematically and find out first. And I know they're a good, you know, board. They've got smart people. They're not going to get way out in front of something if they can't do it. And I'm just trying to find out if they can do it or not.
Daryl?
Depending on what you're thinking about, I could also ask the question about, since you seem to think the Board of Health can regulate the wetlands side of it, please ask council about that, or related to any future questions. If it's an avenue as a receptor, that's fine, but I'd like to know. And since you seem to be saying it's our issue, but again, we don't, we don't look at wetlands.
The performance of the septic system is your issue. I'm not talking about the wetlands. It's the, it's the impact on groundwater, right? It's the performance of the septic system. That's what you get to regulate.
But the way they regulate is prescriptive.
We don't look at it. We don't.
You don't look at groundwater impacts?
Not for wetland interests.
We tried to look at it for the Fields of Sherborne, and it was not accepted by the courts, for whatever reason, despite what all the information showed.
You're talking about, you're talking about wetlands impacts. I'm not talking about wetlands impacts.
No, that was on impacts on wells. But we did not look at wetlands because we didn't want.
And, and the way they regulate.
Right. And I wouldn't think you would be able to. I'm not, I don't think you have to ask that question. That seems pretty intuitive.
But earlier, we put the eggs out in the Board of Health, that's given before.
To protect drinking, to protect drinking water. Yeah, to protect drinking water. That's what you said you do. And that's what I thought you did.
This is a wetlands issue. Although one could argue that wetlands influence groundwater quality.
I thought this was more of a discharge of a discharge of wastewater issue.
With Board of Health, the way they regulate the performance.
Let's, Dave, let's draft a proposed question to Copeland and Page. Mike, you're welcome to review, send it to you for, for comments. But I, I don't know if this requires a formal vote. I think I'm reading it.
I would actually like to look at it myself, if that's okay.
Wait, I'm happy to circulate it to the.
Are you talking about circulated before it goes to council?
Yeah.
Question. How you're going to ask.
The framing of the question.
So I'll.
Let's circulate it to the board.
I don't think we can draft it by committee by email. I think maybe we should just have David put it in the next meeting package and we look at it then.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, somewhere along the way, I'd move to, to support the Conservation Commission's request. And no one said anything about it. So at least let's, if the will of the board is to vote that down, then I think you ought to vote it down. Or if there's no second, then there's no second. But there ought to be some motion here.
So what's your motion?
My motion was to grant, to authorize the Conservation Commission to expend $1,500 to answer whatever questions they may have.
Is there a second?
I'll wait to after we see the legal question. I'm close, but I'll wait to after. I want to actually see the legal portion that goes to Copeland and Page.
Alrighty. I think we're ready to move.
I think it's an interesting question. I just am not ready to.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the proposed development of 41 North Main Street. Do we want to take a quick break? We've been going for about two and a half hours. Take a five-minute break.
Give them a chance to come in.
I want to say something. Just wanted to, Andrew Consigli is here to follow up. They originally came in with a proposed development at 41 North Main Street. Since that time, a group from a number of different boards in town, including myself and Eric Johnson from the Select Board, and John Higley, and Addie Mae Weiss, and Daryl Beardsley from the Board of Health, and Roger Demmler from the Downtown Water Group have met with the developer, well, we've talked to him. We sent him a letter saying, these are the town's concerns regarding this project based on your first, based on the first meeting. So we wanted to get them something so they knew to come, what, to come back with and what kind of we were looking for. And so we have been in communication since then. And I'll kind of turn it over to Andrew now to see where they've come.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Thank you, George. So I'll introduce myself again. Andrew Consigli from Civic Development, consultant for the Lebarskis, who own the property at 41 North Main Street. Gary and Dan Lebarski are here. We also have Dave Formato from Onsite Engineering, and also Pamela Brown from Brown and Brown, as our legal and also a planner as well. So, George, as you mentioned, we, we have sort of talked over the past few weeks. And in an effort to gain a better understanding of what the town's needs are and wishes, and also it gave us time to express kind of what our goals were for this project. And so for people that aren't familiar with 41 North Main Street, it's the parcel right next to the Heritage Restaurant, right on North Main Street. The Lebarskis own, I would say, up to about 40 acres of land on each side of the track, about six acres of land on the North Main Street side, and then the remaining acreage on the other side of the MBTA tracks, on the tracks. And so we're here, and I wanted to sort of start by talking, well, outline today's presentation and discussion and talk about two things. One would be the development plan and what we have essentially planned for the uses and the layout. And then we would also like to talk about the infrastructure needed to make our plan work. And also the, the option of creating a partnership with the town in a way where we could create a sewage treatment plant, a wastewater treatment plant, that would benefit essentially both parties, both our, our development and also the, what the town, or at least what we've seen the town's desire to have wastewater treatment and also water for the town as well. So topics for discussion, just kind of running through them, the development plan for Sherborne Square. Sherborne Square is 41 North Main Street development. So we're trying to, and we're going to be talking about promoting a diverse, walkable downtown. And also we'll talk about the benefits for the town of Sherborne. And also, we'll talk about the benefits for the town of Sherborne with Sherborne Square and then also our ideas for community outreach so we can reach people that aren't here, residents and educate them and gain feedback and be able to, you know, learn and learn from what, you know, what they want and implement that. And then also, we've talked a little bit about the Sherborne Square permitting timeline. And then lastly, as I mentioned, we'll talk about a potential partnership between the town of Sherborne and Sherborne Square that benefits both parties and how that would work. But this, we want this to be more of a discussion and a collaborative effort, as you can sort of see. So, we'll go to the next slide. So, the slide here shows the, anyone have a pointer, actually, it would probably be, okay, so, there we go. So, as you can see, Sherborne Center is up on the left, left-hand side of the screen, upper left-hand side of the screen. You can see the ball fields on the left there. North Main Street runs north to south. And the train tracks, as you can see, kind of curves over to the, the left, up, up from the bottom of the screen, up to the left. So, we outlined sort of Sherborne Center. Obviously, it goes further up than that. The school over on the left-hand side, our development called Sherborne Square, which is about a six-acre parcel on the, it would be the west side of the tracks, but it's on the left-hand side of the tracks on this screen, on this image. And then the Hunting Lane property, that about Hunting Lane is on the right-hand side where the majority of the acreage is. And there is some portion of wetlands that are towards the left. So, the idea is that Sherborne Square would contain assisted living or memory care type of facility that we've been, we've been recently talking to a few operators that are very interested in this location. Also, up on the northern part of it, next to the Heritage Restaurant, would be about twenty to twenty-five thousand square feet of retail. And the historic house is in that location, right on North Main Street, right at the circle, the little junction of Route sixteen and North Main Street. That would be the historic house and we'd be maintaining that and restoring that house in its current location. And the retail would be behind that and you'd have, the idea would be a market, anywhere from about eight thousand to ten thousand square feet market, food market. More of an independent type of food market and then there possibly could be some, some retail shops as well. And then the rest would be surface parking that's required per the zoning, zoning bylaws. On the other side of the tracks with the, I believe it would be about thirty-four acres of land, we would be doing some sort of housing there that isn't planned yet, but the housing essentially would be, the density would be consistent with the Sherborne housing plan. And we'd be working with the planning board and the, the local boards and community to see what the best type of density and fit for that, that parcel would be. So, here's a block of the enlarged plan of the assisted living facility. On the top of the screen, you can see the historic house that would be converted to possibly a restaurant, which actually would be back to its original, used to be a tavern, so it'd be back to its original use. And towards the back, as you can see, there's about an eight thousand square foot market, food market, and then the parking associated with that. And then on the right-hand side, that's abutting, the heritage parcel would be some additional service retail shops. So, this would be the, essentially, the development plan for the six-acre parcel. So, getting back to kind of the community benefits of Sherborne Square and, and what we believe are the community benefits, we're trying to provide a, a community center, a place where it's sort of what's called a there-there. Where right now, it doesn't seem like there is a place for people to gather. This would be a place where people would want to gather as a community and also it's providing in-town services that we see. We were just talking to someone in the hallway about back in the nineteen sixties, it was a lot more retail, a lot more shops, a lot more things here than there were, there is now. And so, the idea is to bring some of that back. And so, a part of that is the market, an independent marking, market providing in-town fresh food, food and produce, restaurants and retail, as I mentioned, the assisted living facility. And one of the points that we want to point out with the assisted living facility is the, you know, obviously the tax revenue gained from that, but also the minimal traffic and minimal school impacts. I think a couple of years ago, we came in here, a year and a half, we came in here with much more of a dense version of the plan that included a lot more residential and, you know, traffic was a concern, school impacts was a concern. So, we felt that we listened and come back with the, with the assisted living facility, I think is a, we feel is a good use for this, this parcel. On the other side of the tracks where the thirty-four acres is, where as we're proposing the housing, as I mentioned, we, I think we can work with the planning board and the town to come up with a, a housing plan that is, you know, for the aging citizens, anywhere, the aging citizens to the young people getting in their first home. And the density would be consistent with the housing's plan the town has. And then I'll jump a little bit ahead here to the wastewater treatment facility. And we have some ideas about that after talking through with some members from the town and the board of selectmen and just doing some more research with our consultants on the best way to push this infrastructure effort forward. So, we can talk a little bit about the significant cost mitigation of doing some sort of infrastructure for the downtown with wastewater treatment. Yes?
If we go up the slide, the restaurants, the ten, fifteen to twenty thousand square feet of restaurants of retail, that does not include the ten thousand mark, right?
It actually does include the ten thousand.
So, that is assumed within the fifteen to twenty thousand.
Exactly. Yeah, and that could range a little, we just haven't really planned out yet or figured out the tenant sizes. So, yeah, so part of this process, and I think it's gonna be really important over the next few months and years as we go through this, if, if this starts gaining traction, is the type of outreach that we want to do. Everything right now, as we mentioned, is, is on, you know, Sherborne Next Door, it's on different forums and people are not here. As you can, as you can see, the majority of the town is at home, hopefully listening and watching on TV. But we'd like to really kind of create a, a, a community outreach, a community outreach program for this project that will be able to get the message out there and inform people and also offer us an opportunity to hear from the residents of Sherborne. So, you know, from now all the way into a potential town meeting vote in April, that's eight months of listening, you know, fruitful discussions and collaboration with, with, with the boards, you know, the, the boards and the committees and also the residents. Throughout that time, we're gonna be talking about a public hearing that could happen in possibly October. That we could talk about who would be sponsoring that and we could co-sponsor that with the planning board or some other board. That would be an open forum where we can talk about, you know, the development plan essentially and the, and the benefits, especially the economic benefits to the town. We would set up an interactive website. We've done this in other projects where it's, it's a platform called Co-Erbanize. And it's a community engagement platform that you can, you can submit questions and we can provide answers as the development team. And you put all the documents and all the, it's a central portal essentially for a community outreach for the town. And it's, it's worked really well in the past. And then having sort of bi-monthly open house discussions, possibly at the library or, or different places around town that people can come meet with the development team and consultants where they could learn more about the project and again, we can hear feedback from them and answer questions. So, permitting timeline for development in forty-one North Main Street. This is our, again, it's a proposal and we're just putting that, putting it out there, but right now, we're in September sixth, two thousand and eighteen, at the board of selectmen meeting, we would have a public hearing and hearing in October two thousand and eighteen and obviously coming up. There'll be a fall town meeting in November and we can talk a little bit about, more about what is actually on that article. And then you'd have the April town meeting, which would be the spring town meeting. There'll be a special permit application right after the spring town meeting if we were successful in the town vote. We would plan on submitting for a building permit, applying for a building permit in April of two thousand and twenty and then about a fourteen, fifteen month construction period. So, we'd be complete, project completion would be about July two thousand and twenty-one. So, we kind of want to put this together to, to have the residents understand that this isn't a quick process. This is something, you know, we're talking about eight months of community outreach. We're talking about a long time of actually, you know, with the planning board, working out all the details and the rest of the boards and committees. And then, you know, fourteen months of construction. So, you know, we're talking about three and a half, four years, you know, away. So, it is a, it is a long time period that there's gonna be a lot of feedback and collaborative, you know, work going on between, between the town and the developer. So, kind of jumping ahead a little bit, I'm gonna jump ahead and then come, come back to this. So, the idea about the infrastructure for the Sherborne Square essentially is, is we, we have some options as the development team to do a traditional septic system and wells. And, but Gary and his brother Lebarskis have been residents of the town now for, I think, twenty years. They actually own and Gary's wife owns and runs a day spa on Main Street, North Main, North Main Street. They're, you know, they're invested residents of the town. And the idea is that they see an opportunity here for the town and to work with them and, you know, essentially provide assistance for a sewage treatment plant and potentially water. And we feel like this is a large opportu, a big opportunity because they own so much land in this area and this is right, obviously, in the downtown area. So, when we first came here a couple, when we came here a couple of months ago, I think it was about two months ago, I think it came across like it was, it was really the benefit of our development that we do a sewage treatment plant and we utilize the ball fields for that reason. I think what we came back with is in doing some of the math and how much we would actually use of that sewage treatment plant, we feel that we would be kind of the minority in using that, that capacity and the town would actually gain, use more of it. And there's a lot of complexity and there was a lot of questions coming through and we couldn't answer them all and we failed. A way to simplify this process would be for the town to lead that effort. And for us as a development team to make a contribution to that effort. I know there's been a lot of studies over the past few years about how can Sherborne get wastewater treatment and also water. And, you know, we feel like there is an opportunity here for a partnership that could make it very economically feasible. And so, as you can see, sort of the circle in the town of Sherborne and the wastewater treatment plant in the costs. And then all of the right-hand side, and I'll read sort of through those, that can feed into the, you know, providing essentially funds for the cost of a sewage treatment plant. Number one, it would be the tax revenue from Sherborne Square. We're talking about the assisted living operator, retail and potential housing. A contribution from Sherborne Square. So, essentially, we would be having to build two septic systems, one for the assisted living operator and then the other one for the retail and then eventually another one for the housing. Those funds could be put towards and contributed towards the town's effort for a sewage treatment plant. If it's run by the town and, and spearheaded by the town, there are federal and state infrastructure grants that can be gone after. We know that the, the school essentially has a dated septic system that eventually would need to be updated. That has to be factored into the, the cost as well. And then also future downtown commercial and expansion. You know, there, there's a lot of untapped potential and opportunity in the downtown right now that can't be, can't be taken, can't be taken for because of the limitations of, you know, the infrastructure. And then, so we talk about how will a wastewater treatment plant benefit Sherborne? Definitely increase environmental and health benefits by eliminating the existing and future septic systems. I'll let our engineers and our consultants talk a little bit more to this, but obviously, we have in Sherborne wells right next to septic. And, you know, that poses a health and environmental problem. It also opens up improvement expansion, expansion, like I mentioned, to existing and future business. Increase assessment values to existing properties and then preparing for the future needs of Sherborne's municipal buildings. So, we feel these are the, some of the benefits. We'd like to hear back from you, what could be some of the benefits as well. This is sort of the start to a conversation of a collaborative and joint effort to, you know, for a, to promote a walkable downtown with shops and services and, but also the infrastructure needed on our part and also the, the town's part. So, we'll be happy to take some questions or have our consultants answer some questions.
Down the present day?
Yeah, that's it, yep. And so, as, as everyone's sort of settling back in, I'll just make one additional point that I, I want to go back to is about the, it's about the, the fall and spring town meeting on the, the permitting timeline. So, our idea for the fall town meeting vote was sort of a, and I'll read it verbatim off of here, would be to seek confirmation of the recommendation of the selectmen and finance committee and planning board to engage in a consultant to perform a feasibility study of a sewage treatment plant on town-owned land located at Cemetery Lane. And that's the previous proposal that we made with, with the leaching fields on the ball fields and there was many, many questions that came up. And, and this is sort of why we, we are coming to the conclusion that we don't have the resources to essentially build a sewage treatment plant. And I don't think Gary and his, and his family want to run a sewage treatment plant. And that's why we're, we're shifting it more towards the town and being able to contribute to that. But we would ask in, you know, in, in a good faith gesture that in the fall town meeting, that somehow, we can, this is up for discussion, put something on the ballot that knows that the town is interested and that Gary should continue working on this project. Because there are, there is money to be spent and consultants to be paid and a lot of work to be done that he just wants to know that, you know, the town is interested in moving this forward. And then the spring town meeting could be the, the vote for the change in zoning needed for Sherborne Square and, and that, the development plan. So, I just wanted to sort of make sure that that was.
I can start out here. Andrew, I just want, just on that issue specifically, you and I have talked about this, that I really would be hesitant to put anything on a fall town meeting because I think it's very soon. I know you talked about community outreach over a number of months. If, we haven't even said a fall town meeting, number one. And number two, if we did, I would worry about going to the town too soon when they don't, haven't had time to absorb and, and get an idea of what the project entails.
Yeah.
And I've told you that's my concern.
Yeah, you have, and I know that, yep.
So, I think if, if it's felt rushed at all, as I've, I've heard this way too many times when things have come before the town, that everybody feels rushed with something and I think they would feel rushed with this if it came up.
Absolutely. And it's not necessarily we're asking for fund allocation at that meeting or, you know, it's more about a good faith gesture on, on a, the recommendation, something that,
But I do think, I think more than that, you should focus on the public hearings. And I think that's a good idea of doing a public hearing where people can come and ask questions and absorb your plan that, that you have.
Absolutely.
And just further on that, I'd like to summarize, because we've had conversations as well, that, you know, we've talked about different options. It doesn't look like, you know, even options of you building a plant and utilizing it until the town can connect to it. And if that doesn't work out math-wise, it doesn't work out. But I also want to be a little realistic where if you're looking for the town to actually, you know, appropriate and build a system, even if you contribute to it, I just, I'm more pessimistic about it. I mean, I think we could do it. I think several will also get behind it. I think a lot of the community will get behind it. the community will get behind it, but some of the two-thirds needed, even, and I get the good, good faith vote of consultant money in the fall, and that may actually pass. It actually, it wouldn't surprise me if that passed, and we have 1,500 bucks in conservation to probably give you. But to be honest, I just, you know, I mean, Sherborn's not in the business of building capital projects. We struggle with a library. You know, if you're looking for Sherborn to build a plant and build a collection system that you can tie into, I just have certain pessimism about that. And I think we could advocate for it, we can move forward with it, whatever, but you probably heard, I don't know if you heard me joke with Mary Ann about an hour ago, that, you know, we've been, you know, studying wastewater in downtown for about, you know, 11 years, and we're really no further along than we were 11 years ago. You know what I mean?
Yep.
So I'm just setting the proper expectations for you and whatever your timeline is and so on. And if you can do alternate methods where you have more control over your own destiny, I encourage you to keep those options open.
Yeah, no, I hear you, and I think that we're open to hearing those kind of suggestions, and this isn't a, a simple project. You know, this is a big effort on everyone's part if it were to happen. So I think we're open to hearing other ideas, and I think there's a lot of other ideas out there, so.
You know, in order for something to happen, something has to happen, right? I mean, we're good in this town at, at studying issues to death and never doing anything, and that may be by design in some cases. Some people, you know, some people may, may think that's a good thing, but here, you know, we've got a committed developer with an idea, and, you know, if we like the idea even a little, even if we've got some concerns about aspects of it, or if there's practical issues, I, I think what I hear is they're looking for some type of a, a good faith signal that it's worth their time and effort and money to continue to work with the town and pursue something that might be in both of our interests. I, I think it probably is, and I think they're looking for a way to have that message made so that they can, you know, satisfy themselves for, for their own business reasons and potential tenants and everybody else that something could happen here. So if we can't get the kind of vote that, you know, they're looking for, George, we should come up with another way to at least keep the discussion open and, and keep the possibility going and encouraging some more progress before we, you know, decide it's, you know, it either is or isn't going to happen. I, I don't, I don't think business as usual in Sherborn is going to work well with the kind of project we have here and the kind of, you know, team that's been pulled together and the, and the kind of opportunities they may have for this, this property.
I agree, and I do want to go back and just say that I think, I like, I like the idea, I can say, I really like the idea of this plan. I think it works well with the general, we were just talking about the town center general plan with the planning board. The idea of a market in town, I think, I've heard a lot of people that I think would be very excited about something like that. I think it's a great way to establish a lot more revenue for the town, which is much needed. And I agree with Mike, I mean, whatever we need to do, I just, I just don't want it to be, I just...
My concern is a quick no to kill something that could be very good for the town.
I, I agree with you that the town is not going to commit to something at a fall town meeting on this project because there's too many unanswered questions, but, you know, if we can get a, a sense of the town that it's worth pursuing further, if we've got some direction that, you know, some steps that, that we can take that are not irretrievable, which I think there's got to be steps like that we can think of, maybe that's the way to do it.
I mean, just the fact that you've taken the step of forming a committee, that's obviously a step in the right direction there.
But we can form committees till...
I know.
You want more committees, you will make...
That's what I think would be well.
Planning board just had three or four additional ones.
Yep, yep, so.
I can add something. The 2014 survey, which went to everybody in town, 50% of the, of people were in favor of public water supply just for the town center to enable development, 50% were in favor of sewers and wastewater treatment to enable more development in the town center. So, and 25% opposed, and 25% said they needed more information.
And what percentage wanted a market downtown? I bet it was even higher than that, wasn't it?
Um...
Make something up if you can't find it.
What is this, Congress? We in the West Wing here?
Certainly I can say the majority of the town were in favor of the small facilities, very favorable.
And don't take my pessimism to be any kind of vote against it. It really is, you know, I think many people see it as a good project, but I think there's a big lift to be had if you want the town to actually build something that significant.
I don't disagree with that piece of it at all. We may still be working on the library, then, if we don't want to have two big projects at once.
Any ballpark idea of what it would cost to hire a consultant? I mean, what's the ask?
Maybe 50.
So can I say a few things? First, some years ago, I made a commitment on behalf of the town with Department of Environmental Protection. We were trying to get a well in the business district, and so we came up with this idea of grandfathering the downtown, and as part of that, this is a long story that I could go on for a long time about all the meetings and all the discussions, but as part of that, we made a commitment that there is a health issue here. There are wells that are in, not in compliance because they don't have zone ones that don't have buildings in them and don't have, that have septic systems in them, and all kinds of things that shouldn't be, shouldn't be where they are in so close proximity to the well. So the town of Sherborn, through myself and other board members at that time, did make a commitment to DEP that we would address this issue. And here we are 10 years, 15 years, 20 years later, we haven't addressed it. The other point I would make is that I did have occasion to look at the property acquisition of the ball fields, and that land is restricted land. It was acquired for parkland purposes, which means it really cannot be used for sewers. I mean, there, there is a way to get legislature approval from the state, requires a two-thirds vote of both houses of the legislature, and would require replication of the land somewhere else. So where you're proposing the, the leach field is legally a non-starter, but there, and I think I mentioned that to you the last time you were here, you asked the question, is there any issue that would make this a non-starter? And I believe I mentioned it at that time, but since then, I've, I've confirmed that that would be the case.
Would that mean we can't replace the elementary school septic field if it fails? That's already under the recreation field?
Fire station.
Yeah, it's pre-existing use.
I don't want to, I'm sorry to sound like, like Kavanaugh, but I don't want to deal with the question, it's not, not really...
We've already released all your opinions anyway.
Let me speak my witness.
Can we, can we talk a little bit about that?
But, but let me, let me just sort of flip that around, that, that water well there is consistent with Article 97. So while you're focusing on, on sewers, there's actually two ends to the spectrum. One is septic, and the other is fresh water. So we could do a municipal well on the location that's consistent with, with Article 97, or at least that's, we've gotten away with that in other locations, so we should be able to get away with it here. And there may be other town property in the area, which I have not looked at. What I have looked at is the ball fields piece that was taken by eminent domain by the town of Sherborn, and it was taken specifically for parkland purposes. And then it was followed up with confirmatory deeds that restricted the use to parkland. So...
Paul, can I ask you a quick question on that? Can you have leaching fields on parkland?
No.
You can't?
You've got a, this is going to be a commercial treatment plant.
No, but it's that, like, but the leaching field part, that's, that's my question. That, that you're still using them as ball fields above?
No, they'll still be ball fields, no change of use.
Yeah, it is a change of use. It is a change of use. There's case law that says, for example, if you put a road in, on Article 97 land that services a commercial district, the road is considered a commercial use. Well, here, you, you have a septic system that's going to be essentially commercially servicing the downtown area, and because of that, that's inconsistent with, with Article 97. So you would have to go through a process. It's, it's not impossible, it's, the impossibility is for the town of Sherborn to come up with the replacement acreage, and you have to come up with twice the acreage that you're, you're diverting. So I...
There could be a number, I know some of the Article 97, but it might, I don't know if it would be appropriate executive session, but I think there's a lot of gray in it, given the fact that the surface use would not change, essentially, it's still be a ball field, or if you discontinue the use of the existing leach field, that is a pre-existing use, and essentially, I think there is a little gray in that interpretation.
There may be, but at the presentation in July, it actually showed a couple of buildings that would have to be on the site, which would actually be the treatment plants that feed the, the leaching field. And you had shown two, but when you did the calculations, or when I did the calculations, it turned out you really would need four buildings in this, on this, and they were 18 feet high and all of that, and you had pictures at that time that looked like, like barns, and you tried to disguise them. But putting four buildings and running pipes and leaching fields and the smell and the aroma and all that kind of stuff that goes with it, it's a, I'm pretty comfortable with saying that, that's a change, that, that's going to trigger Article 97 complications. So I don't see the, what you're proposing as really doable the way it's proposed. But if we did a well there, that may be an easier way to go, or there may be other property in the town, or you might consider that some of your 40 acres, if you are willing to take some land and put your treatment plant on your land, and then have the town connect to it on your land, then I think we got a win-win solution where we can address with the town the, the cost of a sewage collection system and some buy-in to a plant, and we can get some state and federal funding for that. But it would have, it had, the point I'm trying to make is have to be not on these ball fields.
Yeah, yeah, just, just respond, Pam, do you have anything to say?
I respectfully disagree, but I think the next step would be to follow up with real sources to see what the state says. But my opinion is that Article 97 relates to a change of use. I, I'm hearing you, you're saying you believe it is a change of use, but we're not changing the ball field use, we're not changing the ability of the public to use the land, it's still a park. I would be much more likely to be agreeing with you on the location of buildings. That, I think, is much more gray, but in my opinion, and I've actually talked to your planning director as well about this, was the very first thing I did when I started on this project was like, who is this going to be Article 97? And so that was literally the first thing I looked into, and we were pretty strongly in agreement that we're not, we're not triggering Article 97. So I think, you know, rather than belaboring it here, I'll go up to the state and try to get an answer from that end and, you know, see if we can, one way or another, put this through.
So who did you say you spoke with, planning director?
Gina.
Gina. It's great how lawyers can always disagree on things, but at the end of the day, it's up to the town of Sherborn to make that determination, and it seems to me pretty clear. I respectfully disagree with you.
We respectfully disagree.
Yeah. So we'll do, we'll do more work on that and come back to you on what we find. Gerald?
I think you can want to check with M.A.S.T.U.P. and find out if playing fields are okay on top of leaching fields, if those are issues that could action, they don't usually want a lot of activity, I just don't know what the state says. Sorry, there.
Yeah, we, we have some experience with locating playing fields on top of F1 disposal. The town of Bolton actually has a mixed-use soccer lacrosse field built on top of one of their schools, F1 disposal fields. But the key is to construct it properly and, you know, account for the, the activities on top. It's not, it's not uncommon to see parking on top of them, so as long as you account for it properly, you can, you can factor that into the design, and it's, it's an acceptable use. You know, we've seen DEP permit that in the past.
Mary Ann has...
Most ball fields, according to this, this map, are also in a DEP Zone 2 protective zone for wells. So all of this pre-assumes a, a different public town center water supply. And, you know, there, there's been a lot of work on that, that goes very well. Looking at a source of, of the capacity of the wells at that site, I don't think is known yet, so we'll have to look at well locations.
Yeah, so there's, there's two approaches to that. If you cite the F1 disposal within the Zone 2, which is the extended recharged area for public water supply, you have to factor additional treatment into that. There's varying degrees depending on the path of time to the well, zero to two years, greater than two years, and that's part of the permitting process to count that out. So you can, you can have both buried together, but as a cost benefit analysis, you would want to look at, do we have the ability to cite the public water supply, which would then change that Zone 2 configuration? So that should certainly be part of the analysis, because it's not, you know, it's not clear at this stage what the best approach is.
Sure.
But it's, it's a very valid point. In fairness to the project, there's not a well that creates that Zone 2 that's not already contaminated, like spills, or you can tank some of that, so they all have VOCs in them, including...
Not all of them.
One far been cleaned up.
Yes, and they're not public water supplies, so the requirement is for looking at the discharge use of the public water supplies, but private, we have private, so I would recommend that private be included in the analysis.
Have you looked at the possibility of flipping the location of the, the well in this, in the treatment? Exactly. Is that, is that an option you've looked at?
The land, the 40 acres of land that is owned by the proponent is actually more conducive towards water supply than wastewater disposal. It's primarily wetlands.
You mentioned the wetlands, that's down towards the tracks?
Correct, right. So then, the unfortunate, you know, the way this plays out is that you're trying to recharge wastewater into the ground, you're looking for permeable soils, but if you're looking to get water out of the ground, around here, it's usually a bedrock situation, so permeability of the soil above it is really irrelevant. So, and not part of the site, it's more about bedrock and less about permeable soils. Over on the ball fields, it's about permeable soils, so the Article 97 issue notwithstanding, from a technical perspective, that's how this would play out, everything being equal.
With the, with the, so we've been talking about wastewater, two separate things, wastewater and then also fresh water. And for our development, for the Sherborn Square, we were always thinking that the well for our development was going to be across the tracks, and we've been actually working with, been starting the process with a conservation permission, with a notice of intent, and to go test that, the wells, the well capability over there. But my question to the town is, do you see the sewer being connected to the water? But my question to the town is, do you see the sewer being connected to the water happening at the same time? Or can they be completely separate? Like, for example, can we just be talking about wastewater treatment?
Separate. In the ideal world, you'd build both at the same time for disturbance. But I think between permitting, the threshold, and ultimately the need, there really is. If you go back to page fifteen of the general plan there, and you remove any one of these entities, and you've already improved it greatly, you move the leach fields, or you move the wellhead radius, in that you've made it, you've improved it greatly. On that, whatever committee that we've went on forever, there are differing opinions on which one is better per se. It is of my opinion, and people can disagree, that if you had put one in, a centralized wastewater system would provide more benefit, mostly for flexibility of uses, frankly, of the other properties, as we're held back on what we use based on Title V, and frankly, of greater control of the discharges. Because right now, these are ultimately septic leach fields that are not in compliance, and that are ultimately discharging whatever, whereas a wastewater plant is actually properly operated, and you can actually control the mass loading into the aquifer. So that's at least my opinion. Makes any sense?
So I understood it, there actually were going to be four. You'd have to have four wastewater treatment plants, because that's how you depicted it a couple of months ago.
Those were leaching fields.
So there were two leaching fields, there was a wastewater treatment facility, and then there was a pump station. So that's probably the four items you're talking about. The treatment facility itself and the pump station, a lot of flexibility on where that stuff can be located. It could be on property on Sherburne Square, it could be on some other town-owned parcel that's not Chapter 97 land. I think that the real key for this relative to the possibility of the ball field is really just about leaching. The only part that is key in terms of using that area would be subsurface F1 disposal with ball fields, the park above it. Everything else doesn't have to be there if it can't be there. So it's not a deal stopper, if that makes sense.
So you could pull the sewage treatment plant off the ball fields?
Yes, absolutely.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
And the pumping stations?
That probably helps the continuous use argument a lot.
Well, yeah, because we have septic system. We put a septic, we allow a septic system into land without doing the legal research. So it's not like it's truly grandfathered, it was just done.
It had to be grandfathered by...
That never happens. It wasn't something there in the 1850s, before all the regulations took place. No, it was after the regulations.
I just want to make a point, and not really to disagree with Eric, but you should never, ever, ever be having these conversations without talking about water. You should always be talking about water. There's already a water main to this building, and not having water costs the town hundreds of thousands of dollars on average every year.
I'll definitely agree with that, no question, especially with the existing ducted iron pipe that's there. But it's also being realistic. Like, you know, you heard my pessimism, our ability to build a wastewater plant and...
And I agree with it.
And to come out with both, it's just trying to be realistic.
I just don't ever want to take our eye off.
Well, it doubles the price, at least. And it's hard enough to get the town to vote, for one, let alone...
Right.
I mean, we're trying to find money to remove trees, and all this pushback, we're just trying to get like twenty-five, fifty thousand dollars, and it's like, oh, my God.
Yeah.
We're talking for millions.
The last of the dollars seem to go away. I'm talking hundreds every year.
And this would be an ask of, I mean, the rough numbers that I've heard Roger Demmler mention was, what, two and a half million for sewer and two million for water? Is that for like...
I disagree with the law, but...
That's rough numbers that I've heard thrown around from the downtown water group. Is that... Daryl, isn't that what we discussed in our meeting? Do you remember?
I remember exactly.
Somewhere in that ballpark. Yeah, the four and a half to five. Yeah.
But you finance it, you have user fees, you have grants, you have...
We have grants, because we got the, we can borrow interest-free money from the Water Pollution Abatement Trust. It's very easy to document that we have made a mess out of this area for lack of providing proper distances, disposal, all the rest.
And this is, I mean, now you addressed this with you in our letter, the first thing we brought up was water. So that was because that, a lot of people do believe, as Sean said, when we're talking about sewer, we also want to talk about water. And if we can somehow work together in a public, you know, private partnership to, or have you help us do that, that would be a big step for us, really, you know, looking into using a town resource as a, like, the ball, it's a big ask for you to come and ask for, to use the ball fields, and if we can get as much, so the town wants to get as much benefit out of that as we can.
Yes, but previously, when we came in, we were sort of showing it maybe in not clear of a way where the town would benefit from the sewage treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant. And essentially, so kind of backing up a little bit, so our need, real, our, we don't, I wouldn't say we don't need, but we need more, we need a sewage treatment plant more than we would water, right? That's kind of what it comes down to. But we would be willing to work with the town to see if there's a way to combine the two, because it does obviously help us as well, the water, just not as much as a sewage treatment plant. And then, kind of going back to what I was saying about the fields, is if the leaching fields are on the ball fields, the town, it's for the town's use, not just ours, we're just one of the customers kind of tapping into it, the same way, you know, one of the other business owners along North Main Street would tap into it. So I don't really see it as, you know, we're using the ball fields. It's really the town is using the ball fields. So...
So if I understand this correctly, you still have the option of putting the septic systems on your own property and putting the wells on your own property, and then the town would be on its own for trying to solve its downtown water and sewer problems?
Yeah.
And you wouldn't be able to build as much retail presumably if you did that, because you'd need to take up some of that area?
Yeah, we have been studying it, and that's kind of the direction we would go if this didn't work out.
So the thing the town wants most out of your mixed-use project is probably, I would think, some retail presence in the center of town. It's something that the plan's been looking for.
Yeah.
And the other thing we're looking for in the center of town is some way to solve the existing water and sewer problems that Sean, and John, and Paul, and everybody else have been talking about. So you're really, you're coming here with what could be a win-win for you and for the town?
Yes. I just, I recently just brought an example, and I know we're not putting targets on this land, but it's almost like someone building a shopping center and having a tenant already in place, target, right? Like, it's, we're an anchor, and we're providing a contribution and also one of the largest users that can mitigate and supplement some of the costs.
You don't use the target.
I know, I don't like the target.
I never say that.
I don't like the target idea, but I'm just saying, it's like, well, every, for every big project needs an anchor. Whole Foods, there we go, Whole Foods. I'll use Whole Foods from now on. But every, every project needs an anchor to make it happen, and that's what we feel that Sherburne Square can be.
Well, you're saying you'd be an anchor for the ability to provide water and sewer to the center of town?
Exactly, yes.
Add a more efficient and lower cost overall to the town.
Better, much, well, better said than not said.
That's my understanding of what you're saying.
To the town and to you as well. I mean, yeah.
Right, it's clearly a win-win, but I'm up here.
Right, because we're allowing you to get more entities.
I don't care so much about how much they win. I want them to be successful, but I really don't care. But if the town can win because they're willing to work with us, I think that's a good idea, and I'd like to figure out how to help them get to that point. And if there are obstacles that are irresolvable, and they're willing to consider other options to solve them, that's good. And if we can make the obstacles not irresolvable, that's good too.
You can still get the benefit.
I'm sorry, do you really, I wanted to follow one. You said part of what I had wanted to say, and it's, but I guess, Gina and I can talk about this, it's really a one-time opportunity. Because if we go the septic route, as we said, we're not coming around and participating. So the chance for the town for a one-time contribution, equivalent to, you know, the value of what it would cost to septic, to help the town come into this system, is part of your funding right there. But if it can't move along a part of the project, then we're not, you know, we've got to, we'll do the project a different way. And we'll, you know, thirty years from now, maybe now you're twenty, you'll know another thirty before, or I'm sorry, another ten before, maybe.
More than ten.
Hopefully not. But I think it is, it can be a win-win. And, you know, but don't forget, the opportunity potential is really now or soon, not five years from now, because you're just wait that long.
But that's why I wanted to propose that you, and we build a sewage treatment plant and the pumping stations and everything else, just not on the ball fields. If we did it on your property, you still have all the savings, you still have the buy-in from the town, you have all kinds of opportunities. It's just, and I'm just speaking as a lawyer, because I agree with the idea that we want a partnership and we want to get something done here. It's just, don't do the ball fields. If you eliminate that, can you come up with a project that would have a treatment plant somewhere else that we could be partners with? The hang-up that I'm talking about is a big legal complication that I'm trying to avoid.
Yes, but what if it, what if we find out that it isn't? That's one, I mean, that's the first step, is finding out if we can do this. If we can't, then we'll obviously look at the alternative. But I think our task right now is to look at, to see if it actually is possible. If it is possible, I think it makes sense, because the town is utilizing the most of the sewage treatment plant. And even in future expansion, it's going to be even more, where we would utilize, say, fifteen percent or twenty percent, or whatever that number is. The town is really utilizing eighty percent of it. So why wouldn't it go, why wouldn't it be, why wouldn't it be okay to put it on the ball fields if legally we could?
Jeff?
So I think, if I understood from the prior presentation, we're missing the point here, which is that this allows the project to go from whatever it was, eighty beds to a hundred and twenty beds. So from my perspective, that's an enormous profit potential to this project, and so that's the value that we can get out of this project for the town. You see, the thing is, if you have to build nursing stations and all kinds of facilities and cafeterias you need for assistability, so we, if you go with eighty beds or a hundred and twenty beds, that's almost pure profit, because you're already going to build that infrastructure support in the nation. The only way you can get to a hundred and twenty beds, I assumed, as I last time, was by using the ball fields. If you save on your own property, you're the person that's setting that budget with only eighty beds. That's an enormous, neat benefit to the project. So to me, what the town's looking at is understanding how much of that profit is to the project, and that's the value that contributing to town. It's not the retail, that's irrelevant. What's really relevant is there's a huge boom to this project, which you get to use the ball fields, and the town must capture much of that value.
I don't think the retail's irrelevant at all, Jeff, because I think we don't have another option.
Not in terms of people's desires, in terms of primatch, like the media's story.
Well, we're talking about, we're talking about two different ways of valuing things.
It's very, I am, but they're not comparable. It's minor compared to the value to the project. That's going from eighty beds to a hundred, that's enormous.
And there's a cap on that.
They can remind the numbers to show us, but I'm quite sure I'm right.
And what that's going to... I don't doubt that you're right, I just don't know if that's the right way to measure what the value to the town is.
Yeah, and I do, I do have to say, that isn't the angle we're really coming from. And we have talked about, we have talked to a number of assisted living operators and memory care. And, you know, the one that we were proposing back a couple months ago was the eighty bed, because that's who we're talking to. I would say, yes, it does open up the potential if we do a sewage treatment plant for a bigger project. But that bigger project could be three stories, and maybe the town doesn't want that. And so it's all about what we can fit on the land and what we, will be approved, so that it's, it's all hand in hand. Like, it's...
Well, if I can, check me if I can be recognized. What that, ultimately boiled down with Jeff says there, is really the negotiation point, in that when they said they're going to make a contribution, no one's saying what that contribution is. And that's really what it's going to boil down to. You know, I've had some, we call it out-of-cycle discussions, talking about like, they're actually constructing certain parts, and maybe they don't want that. But ultimately, and what I've told you guys consistently, is if you want the community to do this, pretty much, the more you give the town, the more likely it's going to pass. If you come in saying, oh, we'll do a connection fee, and we'll give you like five percent, that's like the margin error of a cost estimate, that probably will not be enough to push us over that activation to come and say like, okay, we've been talking about it for ten years, let's do it now. You know, I mean, at some point, that's really the valuable to the town, I think, and to the project itself, is the decision to move ahead or not is going to be based on how much you give, just so you know that. And that's realistic, it really is. You have to make it a selling point, you got to sell to the citizens and say, here's why you want to do it now, because this is a chance of a lifetime.
So our, just so, our plan of action on this is, like we said, the October public hearing. So from now up into the public hearing, we would figure out that, those metrics, essentially. We have an economic advisor that would essentially do a study in the fiscal impacts or benefits. And at that, at that meeting, we'd be able to present kind of the numbers, and then we would be able to figure out, you know, what we would be able to contribute. And then you could go back and say, oh, this is a good deal or isn't a good deal. There's a lot to figure out here, and we're trying to lay out the process, but we can't do it kind of without you guys.
Let's go, John, Sean, and Daryl, in that order.
Yeah. Another value, I think, this is the right slide, is the assisted living units count towards our housing. Our Housing Protection Plan says we want to get to ten percent and stay in ten percent. So the assisted living counts as housing units, which makes us further away from that goal. So having the area going up Pumping Lane, that section of parcel referred to the Housing Protection Plan, we can talk about that, so that part of our goals are to get closer to ten percent and not further away. So to offset a hundred and twenty housing units, we'd like to do something that gets us closer to...
And that would be part of the study that we do, and obviously, we understand that you have a housing trust now, you know, working on it. And so that would all be part of the negotiation and part of this.
Right. So I guess, in the discussion about value, I think another part of this is what's, how does this impact us relative toward getting to ten percent? Does that affect conservation of land? Does it affect us being able to control housing development in Sherburne to our advantage?
Right, there's a forty B cost to this, these units, without some offset. Yep. Sean?
So, notwithstanding pause, legal arguments, but in real estate, when you own something no one else owns, you should try to gain the value of it. We own the ball fields, so I don't think there's any place anywhere near downtown that has the value that the ball fields have.
Yeah, we do have some property that, I was going to ask them to take a look at, the Pine Hill School area. That's not Article 97. It's been taken.
Forget the Article 97. You can get past that. The last thing we want to do is push them away from using town land if there's a benefit to the town, because we gain value, monetary value, and control. If they have to put it on their property, they're going to max it out, and the Sherburne Inn will always have their septic system on the same property as the well. T.N.O. Frosties will have a well and a septic system. They aren't in compliance to DEP, and so will everyone else. There won't ever be a public restroom at C.N.O. We're not going to get all the gains that would just ensue in the next decade if this would have happened. But that's the only place you get the capacity. And buying those schools out of compliance completely right now, if we actually started looking at it, their well's right next to the building, so you're not going to go anywhere near the building with the septic system. And we get the opportunity to rebuild Pine Hill.
Pine Hill system, yeah.
Which is original, and it's examined.
Which is going to be expensive if we have to rebuild it. The town's going to have to pay for that.
Exactly.
Anyway.
Gain all that value by holding the value that they need. We don't want to push them, and they can't go put that system that big up on that hill. Everyone knows they can't. They're saying they can.
Daryl? Save the best for last. Now the pressure's on.
So I was thinking that you had mentioned whatever monies you would be putting in to the septic on your own property, then the contribution. But that might be a couple hundred thousand, few hundred thousand, maybe, which is a small percent of the cost for the treatment plant. But that might be a couple hundred thousand, few hundred thousand maybe, which is a small percent of the cost for the treatment plant. And so to that end, I think when we're looking at treatment plants, we would see what's modular, so that it could be built incrementally. Because the folks who are downtown who invested a lot in their systems, and again, they're drinking, drinking water quality at the moment. And I don't think that it's a long-term sustainable situation. But they're not really going to want to hook up, you know, a high-sewage treatment plant and make them do it to make it financially viable for the town or that you get some payback. And there is a subset of people who are in grunt of this kind of investment. So, you know, is that fair or is it not fair? So those are, I think, just, I'm trying to look at, I'm not, I don't know. Or to always interpret everything that comes out of my mouth as being anti-development, but that's not the point. Trying to say, let's do it in a smart way, so that we're not ruining drinking water quality for people who have invested a lot of money to be living in this town beginning. So I just want to see if I'm smart and try to point at what issues that would be pitfalls. But there are things that we could address technically. And we consult what we should think that is going to be, you know, or just things to be aware of. So.
Just a question on that, Daryl. I like this idea of the mod, is this something that has been built, like a modular wastewater system that can be gradually built up? So the initial cost isn't as much until you need more capacity?
There's some degree that can be done. I think it's an area that folks are always looking at because some of the initial costs seem to be big. But there are ways to do it again and I don't know how much it stands for, but I'm fine with that. I've seen limited examples for wastewater treatment. But often there's a more known match such as apartment offices, so you know what it's going to be when they build a treatment plant to live in. Just a little side point, often the recommendations are to have the wastewater treatment close to the buildings, will something get operated better? Because if there's bad orders, people don't want to put up with that. Put it somewhere more remote, like the playing fields, you know, things tend just to work more. So that's kind of a concept that I've seen used in a lot of towns, so.
That's a great point and I can speak to, we actually have some experience on a couple of projects we're working on right now with modular technologies. And it's akin to, you know, treatment in package. And it would actually be a very good use for a project like this for two reasons. One, because you can get modular units that come essentially prefabricated. So you would account for them within space and piping. But the cost of the capital of actually furnishing the technology and the equipment isn't actually expended until you buy like the next unit. So you maybe start at 30,000 gallons and then you buy another 30,000 gallon unit when you get to a point where you actually have flow to accommodate that. And that could also dovetail into the expansion of the collection system. And maybe you start with a small collection system in that immediate area. And then as people want to connect in, you extend it so that you're not looking at the entire nut up front. I mean, in addition, those technologies that I've been talking about, they're actually really good at producing almost reused water quality. So it's a nice fit for a possible discharge in a zone too, because you're treating to a really high level to start. So there are some technologies out there currently that are really, you know, tailor-made for this type of project.
Terrific. Well, the, I want to thank the six members, the six town volunteers that have been working on this important project. And it's a project that's important to you all and to the town. Addie Mae Weiss, John, Daryl, Budger Demmler, and Paul and Mike, and I owe you, George and Erica, thanks for representing us so well. Is there anything else? I mean, I think we've got work to do.
I have a question. I just would like to know if there's anything that Gary or Andrew or anybody on their team, Pam, wants to know from us while they're here tonight that we haven't covered? So that when they go away, you know, they've got the information they hope to get out of tonight.
Well, number one, I think if we were to go forward and do a, hold a public hearing in October, you know, who would sponsor that? You know, could it be a cosponsor?
John, would you guys sponsor that or would you want to agree?
Yeah, we've done similar.
It's typically been the planning board that sponsors those things because it's sort of a planning exercise. I'm pretty sure we'd mostly be there.
Yeah, I would, that and then also the Fall Town Meeting in terms of what actually the warrant article could read and if it could be voted on as a, you know, as like we were mentioning, a good faith.
I'm not sure we can come up with that tonight, but I...
Yeah, not tonight.
Between now and October, we could, and at some point, we're going to have to open a warrant anyway, right?
Right, right. I mean, we still have to see if we're even, I mean, we haven't gotten anything.
We'll find that out soon enough.
Yeah, and the reason why I ask is I just don't want to, we don't want to miss the opportunity.
Understood, yeah.
Yeah, I think we have work to do on that, because I share Eric's view that if asked for a $50,000 consultant is, we do want to, we don't want town meetings to say no on a project that has not been fleshed out a lot. So I would, if we can find some other way of demonstrating the town's interest and commitment, I think it would be...
If we weren't looking for money, I think, and maybe how we phrase, but I think we were really looking for is town on line, looking into this, determining feasibility. We understood that you didn't really want to have any money on this Fall Town Meeting.
Almost a recommendation from the boards, because it's very important to have the support of the leaders of the town. That's kind of where we're going with that.
For kind of a sense of the town vote that we can put into some context of a warrant article.
I was going to ask if, I mean, if you're doing, I mean, you normally do an annual town meeting. Do you do town, special town meeting most of the time?
Yeah.
Not typically.
Just occasionally, don't like do some special project or something, I don't know.
Oh, there'll be a special project on this Fall Town Meeting, but it's not one that you guys put in the table.
Forever.
Chuck, Daryl, that's something, sure.
I just had a comment on the septic size, wastewater treatment plant size. It would be helpful to have more information on what the rest of the development would be, you know, the septic zone. Because what that starting threshold is, would set the tone for what you could do. If it's too low, then some of the modular limits aren't as small. So knowing what we're planning for the rest would help identify what's a fixed, you know, expected money that would become. And that would help.
Just out of curiosity, what's the maximum distance or, you know, an outer range distance that you could put the septic, I mean, the wastewater treatment plant and leach fields from your development?
The real question is collection, so it's easier to convey treated effluent than it is to, you know, convey raw sewage. But, you know, if you think of like Framingham, for example, I mean, how many miles upon miles of collection?
So I guess, let me ask it a different way. You talked about doing, potentially doing the pump station and the treatment building on the property or at some other location than the ball field. So if you did that close, is there a limit on conveying the treated effluent to the leach fields?
Yeah, that's well within like the sweet spot of cost-effective conveyance.
Well, I thought you were going to offer your backyard.
No, I have some other ideas.
Framingham's 20 miles from Deer Island.
Not Framingham, not Deer Island, I'm not telling anybody. It's top secret.
I was thinking Framingham, but...
You can convey, you can remain almost limitless.
All right, no, but that's, that's good to know though, because I think that does potentially open up options if the recreation issue is an issue or if there are other issues.
He's trying to put it next to my house.
There you go. What about the CM&amp;D building and that property?
Gary, did you have any questions for us?
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for coming in. Really, this is very helpful. Thank you, appreciate it.
You too, Chris. You can either do all the...
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sharon's on the financial report. Is she really going to give one? Sharon really going to give a financial report?
No, it's took that off the agenda.
It's still on the agenda, but, okay. All right, great. I move we adjourn.
And did you have, did you have a report?
I was just going to mention about the Grange, on the Grange Fair coming up on...
Make it super, mention it super quickly because I'm...
Eric, can I bring up one more question?
Chuck, actually.
Chuck, the chair. Can I just bring up one more question?
September 15th is the Grange Fair, that's what he was going to say.
One of the, one of the other showstoppers, like we talk about, is the, is the soil actually being perked? And we were wondering if...
Hey, Jeff?
Jeff, Jeff, we're still meeting.
We're still going.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, so one of the showstoppers, as you mentioned, is the soil being perked and seeing if it is, if we can get that done. Is there a way that we can get that done or the town could get that done in a speedy manner? So we, that's one of the, yeah, I mean, it seems like it would be a simpler thing for the town to do.
Have, Daryl?
That's Daryl. Yeah, can the Board of Health agent, if you dig it, can...
He has a question that's really kind of for you. Go ahead, Andrew, can you ask it again? Because Daryl's...
So, so we want to see if the soils over in the ball fields perk. It would be a better thing for the town to do and simpler thing for the town to do. And you mentioned that you can just dig the hole.
Would the Board of Health be able to do that with CM&amp;D, just to see if it was something that we were moving forward with?
I guess so. We could also see if there are any records existing that give some...
Boy, I sure hope it perks where the septic system is for the school.
It's been perking for 50 years.
We have perked that from the fire station.
All right, well, I'll ask the agents to look and see if they can find and recollect.
Okay, so... Dave, George?
Yeah.
Daryl's questioning, should she work with on this?
Do you come up with stuff?
Maybe do.
Work with Dave on it, yeah.
Okay, and I can follow up with Dave on that? Okay. Appreciate that.
Yeah, we got to go up and finish the adjournment.
Motion to adjourn? On favor?